Good evening, and welcome to the Tuesday, October 7, 2008 Glendale City Council meeting. Ms. Buchanan, could we please call the roll?
Council members Najarian, Quintero, Weaver, Yusefian, Mayor Drayman.
Here, and Councilmember Quintero has the flag salute.
Please join me in the flag allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Shall we bow our heads? Tonight, we are thankful for the opportunity to serve our community, empower our leaders in their continued efforts to maintain the rights and freedoms we enjoy in this great community. Let our minds and hearts remain open to your perfect direction. Amen.
May we hear the report, please, of the city council?
The agenda for the October 7, 2008, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, October 2, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much. I would like to just change the schedule a tiny bit here because we have some youngsters and young folks, young adults also in the audience, who are here for the portion of oral communications related to announcements, and so that we can get them on their way to do their homework, watch the debate, and avoid seeing whatever bloodshed may occur here tonight. Why don't we bring them forward? And we'll go to the section of oral communications for those who volunteer to limit their time to three minutes for the purpose of making announcements, and we do have a few of those speakers, I'm assuming. But let me, thank you very much. Let me start with Edwin Musan, if you wouldn't mind, and we thank you.
Good evening, my name is Edwin Musan. Thank you for rearrangement of the schedule, we appreciate it. We won't take too much of your time. I've got some young ambassadors from the homeownership and Glendale R.R. chapter to give you an update and convey some information to you guys. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the city council and honorary Mayor Drayman. My name is Brian Musan, and I am one of the junior ambassadors for the 2008 Glendale Friendship Games. As you know, we've already been here to ask for the city's endorsement. Now, we want to thank the city for providing us with the endorsement. Also, we would like to thank the city for providing some resources for the games, such as the sports complex fields for soccer and the Glendale High School facilities. We would like to inform you that the soccer tournaments have already begun and have been so far successful. There are eighteen teams, including teams from the AYSO, CV Clubs, R.R. chapter, MTM Club, MGM Club, Soccer Store, Pi United, and the City of Glendale team. While on the subject of soccer, we would like to inform you that on October 13, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Glendale Sports Complex, there will be a Chivas USA Festival. The activities will include Chivas USA Team Mascot, professional Chivas player Aleco Escondarian, games, giveaways, and much more. Everyone is welcome to come and have a good time. All additional information can be found out about the games at rrgfg.com. Once again, I would like to thank the city for its endorsement of the games and to remind everyone to come and participate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We hope everyone does.
Hi, I'm Ani Gazikonian. I don't know if you guys remember me or not, but previously, we came to talk about the Friendship Games, and we would cordially like to invite you to come and participate and watch. It's really fun. The, yeah, you guys should just come and watch. And, yeah, the soccer tournament's going on. It's not too late to register if any of you have any teams in mind that want to play. You guys can register at rrgfg.com/GlendaleFriendshipGames. So it's rrgfg.com. Yeah, you guys should come.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Ivana, I'm also a junior ambassador. I'd like to also invite you guys, and the closing ceremony is going to be October 19, at 5:00 at Glendale High School Auditorium. So, as Ani said, it's still not too late to register and come and join us.
And can you state your last name, just for the record, please?
Ivana Gregorian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Did we cover it?
Yes, we did.
We did. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. All right, our next speaker is Ani Gazikonian. Oh, that was her. Okay. You turned in separate cards. All right. Thank you. So that was it? Okay. I know Mr. Mayor is out there. Were you not speaking today, Mr. Mayor, for the library?
Yes, thanks for the priority.
I don't have a card for it from there.
Thanks for the priority. First of all, I wanted to report that we had a very interesting two lectures over the weekend with Hiccup Sansarian, talking about the environmental problems in Armenia. A week from Thursday, we're having Gustavo Aralano speaking on the One Book One Glendale Partial Event, Ask a Mexican. That's the title of his book. Gustavo Aralano is well-known, he's on TBS Radio, he's a columnist for the L.A. Times, he's a regular reporter for the Orange County Weekly. He's a great speaker, and he's also going to talk about and sign his book, Ask a Mexican. Now, that's a week from Thursday, 7:00 at the library. Mission is free to all our events. And then, we have a special treat for all the people at Glendale, except the members of the city council, because on Tuesday, October 28, I'll repeat that, on Tuesday, October 28, we're going to have Ernest Borgnine at the library to talk about his autobiography, Ernie, an Autobiography. And he'll be here in person, he's 91-years-old. Everybody's heard of Ernest Borgnine, so I urge everybody who, come a little early, because we're going to start promptly at 7:00. We expect a pretty full house, and we're going to start promptly at 7:00. And he'll be there to talk about his book, answer questions from the audience, autograph his book, and it should be a great event. Those of you who haven't heard of him, you should have. He's 91-years-old, he's acted in 198 movies, he says, "I'm going to do 200 before I pass on to other things." And he's also been on some famous TV series like McHale's Navy, just to name one. So that is October 28, Tuesday, and our book nook is still there. Come in, buy a great book for 50 cents or a dollar. Bring your books to the library, so we can sell them at the book nook. And we're also, Jack London is still at the library for the balance of this month. There's going to be another movie on Jack London. His books are for sale, not for sale, they're there to be read. Call of the Wild. He's written 50 books, he died at the age of 40, unfortunately, and there'll be even some dog sledding exhibits, and actually, people participating in showing how to do dog sledding. So, come to the libraries, catch up on our events, and especially, a week from Thursday, Ask a Mexican, and then, October 28, Ernest Borgnine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next speaker is Myrna Stanley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and staff. My name is Myrna Stanley. On behalf of Verdugo Woodlands Homeowners Association, and I'll be very brief, I just wanted to distribute a booklet that we worked on for about two and a half months, and it addresses lingering concerns we have regarding residential development citywide. And we hope you'll take the time to read it, and we welcome any comments you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. The next speaker is Megan Bowery, followed by Doris Tweed.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Megan Bowery, and I'm representing the Salvation Army and their Project Safe Place, which is represented by this sign that is all over the city. Today, I want to tell you a little bit about this network. It's an aptitude, safety network for youth in Glendale that they can access 24 hours a day, the whole entire week, free of charge. And there's several ways that youth can get help in Glendale. They can get on any beeline bus, or go to any of a variety of community locations bearing this logo, bearing this logo, including the Glendale Police Departments, all the fire departments, the beeline bus, every public library, every Domino's, every Burger King, such and such locations like that. A lot of community members have really stepped up and joined this network for youth. There's also a 24-hour hotline number that youth can call and get direct link to youth counselors that can help them through their crisis and their need. There's also websites, social networking pages, such as a MySpace, that they can access help as well. So, what happens when they contact Safe Place? Maybe they're having a crisis, maybe they're being abused at home, they're considering running away. Maybe they're already homeless, they get in contact with Safe Place, anywhere they see this sign, or call our number, and we get them help right away, take them to a shelter, get them reconnected with their family, whatever it is that they need. So, why am I here? Besides telling you about this program, which I am hoping you are all aware, I wanted to give out some informational pages that we've created, discussing the details of the program in Glendale. So if I can hand these out. In addition to these pages of information, we'd like to invite each of you to a reception next, October 15, Wednesday, is coming Wednesday, at 6:00 at the Salvation Army, which is 320 West Windsor. And there, we're going to have a reception to thank all of the people who've contributed, Domino's, Glendale beeline buses, the police departments, and those people who've come to be involved, the counselors, and just the different donors that we've had. And we would love to spread more information about this network, so that the rest of the city can have the opportunity to get involved. So I hope to see each of you there. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker for this section is Doris Tweed.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Starbird and staff. My name is Doris Tweed, and I'm here this evening to invite you and the community to the annual Fritz Coleman Comedy Night on Sunday, November 2, at the Center Theater. All proceeds for the evening will go to your local chapter of the American Red Cross. Because of the popularity of the event, a second show has been added this year. There will be a matinee at 5:00 p.m. and an evening show at 7:00. Tickets are $25. VIP tickets are also available for the 7:00 p.m. show, which include a wine and hors d'oeuvre reception at Phoenicia Restaurant from 4:30 to 6:30 prior to the show, and VIP tickets are $45. Fritz Coleman is the master of ceremonies, and there will be four comedians selected personally by him to entertain you. It is always a fun evening, and we hope you can join us. We are also looking for sponsors for the program. Ads range from a full page to business card size. The deadline for the ads to be placed in the program is October 15. For tickets, you can contact me, or I have tickets with me this evening, if you'd like, or you can call the Red Cross at 818-243-3121, and then press zero, or you can order them online at www.arcglendale.org. And I'd also like to remind you of the Kiwanis Duck Race, a weekly Saturday. If you haven't adopted your ducks, contact me, and I'll sell them to you.
Right. Doris Tweed will help you get your ducks in a row. Thank you so much. That was our last card. Let's return to our schedule at item 3, if we could, please, Ms. Buchanan.
Item 3A, Agenda Preview for the meetings of October 14, 2008.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This agenda preview will be for next Tuesday, October 14. The Glendale Housing Authority Redevelopment Agencies, there are actually no specific action items. There is, however, a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority, where those bodies will entertain a report from the Director of Community Development Housing regarding standards for condominium conversions. On the Glendale City Council, that same evening, starting at 6:00, there's three items that the city council will address. The first will be a report from the city attorney regarding aggressive solicitation by council members. The second will be a report from the Director of Planning. This will be an urgency ordinance extending plan check through December, plan check time through December 31, 2008. Then lastly, there will be a hearing conducted by the Director of Planning. This will be a proposed ordinance establishing Royal Boulevard as a historic district overlay zone. That would be all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McPhaul. Before we go on with the appointments, do you have that card? We do have one speaker that I'm going to take out of sequence, simply because we have a number of young people connected with that, and consistent with what we were doing earlier, let's help get them on their way. And if only I could make out the handwriting, I could be of some help, but why don't you tell us your name? You're Susan?
Yeah.
That part I've got.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Susan Gukasheyan, and I'm a sixth grader at Toomey Middle School in Glendale. I think that students are being assigned far too much homework, which explains all of our heavy backpacks. My 11th grade sister sits until 2:00 a.m. doing homework and gets up at 6:30 a.m. to go to school. I wrote an article about this issue and submitted it to the L.A. Times. They published my article, and a few days later, a letter was sent to my school. It was the last day of the year. We had been giving some time to say our goodbyes to each other and write some meaningful messages in each other's yearbooks, when someone came in my classroom. It was one of the secretaries who worked in our school office. She had a large yellow envelope in her hand, which she gave to me. The whole class was sila as they watched me open the big envelope. I saw that the L.A. Times had sent me a copy of a letter that was mailed to them by an educator. The retired educator had grandchildren who also stayed up very late to do their homework. She had gotten complaints from parents with children who received a mountain load of homework. How can we change this? Well, my theory about why teachers assign so much homework is that they are not aware of their students' weak points, or why each individual student doesn't understand. To fix this, teachers assign a sea of homework with hopes that all of the weaknesses will be covered by the material, but they aren't. If every teacher in every subject does this, it is no wonder that students are breaking their backs with heavy textbooks and slaving away into the night. This is how one problem leads to the next. When pupils are being assigned too much homework, they're breaking their backs with heavy textbooks that contain the homework. I propose that the government invests more money in our schools and our children's futures. With more money, schools can make more classrooms and buy more textbooks. This means that kids don't walk around with heavy backpacks, because they have a bear of books at school and at home. This means students can have homework that doesn't take hours upon sleepless hours to complete, because the teachers in their smaller classrooms can effectively identify each student's needs. We need to make a change and give more money to schools. If we all work together and really strive to help children succeed, I know we can make a miraculous difference.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, do you think we could get an arrangement like that, where we could have a set of our books here and at home?
No, but we'll get your backpack, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Susan.
I have a question. Have you spoken to the school board?
No, but I'm planning to.
Yeah, very good. Go to their meeting.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you so much. All right. Let us now return to our normal schedule here. We are, where are we, at 3B?
At 3B, continued from September 23, 2008, regarding appointment of Mr. Al H. Hoffman to the Arts and Culture Commission.
Thank you. And Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd ask for you to indulge me for about 60 seconds. When a lawyer says 60 seconds, it probably means longer than that, council members are timing me. Two weeks ago, when this item came up, I think I fell off the, what I'll call the legal wagon, and meandered down the Yellow Brick Road of Legal Nuance, addressing the issue of whether the qualifications outlined for Arts and Culture Commissioners was mandatory or directory. And as I say, I needed to apologize to the council for not following my own advice, and that is, the shortest, most concise answer is most often the best. And so I wanted to offer a clarification tonight of what I said two weeks ago. First off, it's important to note that the qualifications set forth under 2.62.040 are not nullified in any way, whether we look at them being mandatory or directory. They do not change. They are there, and they exist for a reason. The difference, and it really is more legal nuance than anything else, is if something is considered directory, it means that there is just no punishment involved if you fail to follow the direction. If it's mandatory, the language generally means that there will be some consequence at the end of that road. And there's a number of cases, which, again, I'm not going to go into, to address that. So I wanted to make it clear that what I was saying two weeks ago wasn't intended to note that the qualifications or criteria were annulity, should be avoided, or in any way disregarded. They exist, they're there for a reason. It's just that if the council were to choose to ignore them, there would be no punishment or liability involved. Hopefully, that helps clear up what I said two weeks ago.
Well, we'll see.
Always a question.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, and I don't know if anybody had a clock on you to see whether you made it under 60 seconds or not.
He did. He's got another five seconds left.
Don't tell him that part.
Remember, he talks fast.
That's right. Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Howard. All right, we're at 3B. I have two speaker cards, and why don't we go to the public and just hear them right now, and then we'll see if there's any debate on the item. The first is Sue Eller Yusefian, followed by Al Hoffman.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city staff, and audience. I am Sue Eller, Councilman Yusefian's wife. I rarely find it prudent to come before you to speak, but your actions two weeks ago regarding this issue compel me to be here. I know there will be fallout, but this, too, is too important for me to sit idly by. What rings me before you is the extreme frustration I felt as you, Mr. Mayor, were insisting on your narrow definition of what an artist is. I know whereof I speak, because I, too, am an artist. I have a music composition degree from Berklee College of Music in Boston, Massachusetts, where I graduated magna cum laude after attending for only three years. I believe Scott Howard's daughter currently attends Berklee, so he can confirm for you what it takes to excel there. I have worked in the entertainment industry on network television shows for over 20 years under some of the most pressure cooker situations that only those in that business can truly appreciate. The shortlist includes 21 Jump Street, Tour of Duty, Sisters, The Drew Carey Show, Felicity, and Friends. I was a music editor, the person who does the technical and creative work required to synchronize music to picture, collaborating with composers, directors, producers, and other musicians, to deliver music under extreme deadline pressure. I tell you this only so that you realize my credentials as I come here tonight. Mr. Hoffman is certainly no friend of mine. In fact, I can recall many instances in the news press and in these chambers where he has spoken out against my husband. But, it takes an incredible amount of stewardship to take a vision and a plan that is on paper and steward it through the morass of bureaucracy that I'm sure is involved in the space program, and is probably worse than even here, but maybe not. It is that ability that is sorely needed on this commission. Very few people have the interest, the commitment, and the skill to turn this thing around, but I believe Mr. Hoffman does. Councilman Yusefian is a man who does more than merely spout the definition of stewardship. He lives by its guiding principles, and to that end, he's put his personal differences aside and realized the value that Mr. Hoffman can bring to this commission. We need to make the art and culture in this city a priority, and not just be content with an ineffective commission. Mr. Mayor and council, if you wish to do more than just pander to the arts, it's time to appoint someone who has a demonstrated ability to produce something. People are not defined by what they do. You can be an artist, no matter what you do for a living. A case in point, I am no longer a music editor, but a realtor, and my creative approach is being used to grow my business. In a time when most realtors are struggling, I am thriving. I just recently hired an assistant, I closed an escrow last week, one four hours ago, and when I leave these chambers, I am countering on a listing I just got with 12 offers. In closing, let me tell you an interesting fact. The island of Bali, known worldwide for its amazingly rich arts and culture, has no word in their language for art or artist. Art was never considered a conscious production for its own sake. Rather, it's regarded as a collective obligation to make things beautiful, and to create beauty in the service of society. Two more sentences. Thus, a figure maker or picture maker were called upon when their skills were needed. Their prime aim was to serve their community, and it is this guiding principle I believe you should follow, and be the stewards of the city you were elected to be. And with that, I urge you to appoint Mr. Hoffman tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Al Hoffman?
Mayor Drayman, councilmen, staff, and public. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Sue, for that report. I certainly do appreciate that. Well, I guess we certainly made history here. I can't recall a commissioner or board appointment making the front page of the news press.
Several times. Several times.
It has, okay. Well, this one was really something. My wife said, "Oh, my God, what are you doing?" Well, really, I wrote an article in the paper. I have copies that, I think I sent them to all of you. If you need copies, I have them here. Essentially, I had to clarify why I accepted this nomination. And it was based on the fact that at the meeting where the mayor decided that the commission wasn't doing a job, it wasn't getting anything done, and he wanted to restructure it, and he wanted to appoint a task force. And based on that, I heard some names like Barry McCombe and Sheldon Baker, who was initially responsible for the commission, were being tossed out as possible participants on that task force. I had worked with Barry on the, I have to correct, I had put in the paper it was the downtown strategic plan, it was downtown specific plan. That was that old one 10 years prior, I guess. So anyhow, during that working group, the citizens' working group, I got heavily involved with this, and I took it on that the arts was really something lacking, and I had made a lot of proposals at that meeting, and we got a lot of positive feedback. And when this came up, that the commission was going to be disbanded, I saw Councilman Yusefian after the meeting, and I said, "Gee, based on that," and it looked like the stepping stone to the task force, I'd really like to get involved in that. And he says, "Well, get an application resume in right away." And all I had was my professional resume at the time. And then the following week, he nominated me, and that history is after that. I certainly, if it came down to the letter of the requirements for the commission, I probably wouldn't have even accepted the nomination. I took it based on the fact that I thought I was going to get into something that I really wanted to do, and that I feel I can lend a lot to the city. I worked well with the planning department, previously Elaine, and now Hassan, and Tim Foey, and Mr. Kraus, and also mostly Alan Loomis, the urban designer. And he was very heavily involved in what we were doing at that study group, and worked with us in group sessions. And that's how I got involved in it. And I certainly didn't want to cause all this, I guess, bizarre happenings. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. All right, those are our two speakers. Which end would you like to start? I'm Mr. Yusefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For full disclosure, I'd like the public to know, I tried to talk my wife out of coming here. As you could see how well that worked. She has a mind of her own, and I must tell you, it's a beautiful mind, to an extent. That's why I married her. It is. It is. That's it. Honey, I will not be coming home tonight. Anybody has a garage, I can sleep in. I'd like to make a couple of comments on the issue. I'd like to make a couple of comments on the issue that were, there was a letter written by an individual in the paper and talked about the fact that an artist and an engineer, or artist cannot live in the mind of an engineer, or a brain of the engineer, or vice versa. So I'd just like to let a couple of factoids out there. Leonardo da Vinci was an artist and an engineer and an inventor. Frank Capra, a great director, was also a chemical engineer. And for many years while he directed, he also taught at Caltech. Another person was, I don't think a lot of people probably remember, Herbie Hancock. Some of us who are older, we remember Herbie Hancock. The new generation doesn't. He was also an engineer. And believe it or not, Mr. Alfred Hitchcock was an engineer. Now, Mr. Weaver, do not get any ideas, but the fact that just because you're an engineer, you cannot have an artistic tendencies is false. It has nothing to do with what you do for life. It has to do with what your passion is and how you want to express it. That's part of the reason I appointed Mr. Hoffman, because he did have a passion at one point. He did play violin for six years, and then was strong enough to go back to his parents and say, "Sorry, I'm not doing violin anymore. I'm going to do trumpet." And played that in a band till junior high school and high school and college. And he actually went to the Rose Bowl and the Rose Parade. And we used to have a band in the Rose Parade, which for, I don't understand why we don't do that anymore. I see little cities that have a band at the Rose Parade. We don't in this city. I don't know why. I think we should think about that. Nevertheless, as I explained last time, what some people think that it's not his strengths, I see it as strengths. I see his strength as being an organizer and having an eye on the future to see how he's going to accomplish a goal and bringing everything together. And that's part of the reason I appointed him. I did not intend to make this a very controversial issue. To an extent, it may be a blessing in disguise, because I think Arts and Culture Commission has taken a notoriety, and people now are looking at it, and they're going, "Wow, this is a commission or an organization that is worth fighting over." So in a way, I'm glad I did this. And as I said, I will continue to put the nomination of Al Hoffman for Arts and Culture Commission at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Yusefian. Shall I continue on down the row, or does...
You need a second?
Well, I think I have to turn to the city attorney on that. I have no idea, Mr. Quintero.
We can certainly treat that nomination as a motion, which then needs to be seconded.
Is it not seconded last meeting?
Well, that was, the matter was pulled and continued to this meeting, so that motion is no longer on the table.
Oh. Well, for lively discussion purposes, I will second.
We have a motion and a second.
One more discussion?
I'm going to entertain any discussion that any of my colleagues want to make.
Well, I'll say a couple things. One, I am an engineer, yes, but I'm also an artist. I sold portraits in college. Every art class I've ever taken in my life, even through college, whether it's landscape, design, or whatever, I got straight A's in. So yes, engineers can be artists. But I didn't make a decision to vote no on Al because of the word "shall." It's just what I believed should be the right fit. Here's ten other applicants for that position, most of them with a great deal of experience in the arts and entertainment industry, in positions of management and direction, whatever. Some very talented people in here. And Mr. Yusefian picked Mr. Hoffman. I disagree with it. That's my bracket. It's not the first time I've voted no on commission appointments. I was sad, two reasons. I was watching the USC Oregon State game, which my team lost. That was one sadness. And during the halftime, I turned over to the Larry Zarian Show, in time to hear Mr. Yusefian say that his colleagues didn't read Mr. Hoffman's resume. I read it. I think Mr. Mayor read from it. That's what I had. The next day, I did receive the additional information, the day of the council meeting, from Mr. Hoffman, the day after. This is what I had at the meeting. So to say I didn't read it, that's not true at all. I did read it. I just happened to have a different opinion on the qualification for somebody to be on the Arts and Culture. Simple as that. And why we spent a whole hour on a commission appointment, that has to set a record in my twelve-year tenure on the council. So sad we had to go through that. That's my position, and I still have that position. Thank you.
Okay. Well, since we had a two-two vote on the appointment, I have a few things to say. Let me start by saying that on a personal note, Al Hoffman and I have been friends for many, many years. And in addition to friends, we have, in a sense, been political allies. I generally agree with his views, and he generally agrees with mine. So we've never had any issues, basically, that we disagreed on, or very few, if they were, issues very limited in scope. But let me say, let me read what I'm looking for in terms of, and we're really not headed towards a commission, we're not headed towards another commission like we had in the past. So it's not going to be part of the city's bureaucracy, as one of the speakers mentioned. What we agreed to that night was a city-sponsored, private nonprofit, which would not be part of the bureaucracy, but that nonprofit would be made up of industry professionals who would carry out a city-generated work plan and do programming for the arts and different types of art activities, art shows, dance, music, art performances throughout Glendale, with an eye towards fundraising and assisting retail districts throughout Glendale. That's what we agreed to that night, or at least the majority prevailed last night, that night, not to go with another commission and hire a person to run the commission who would sit in the city hall offices. So we turned the page on what we've had that obviously didn't work, absolutely didn't work. I was part of a sort of a task force that first defined what the Arts and Culture Commission was going to be about. And now that I think back on it, I don't think we had enough art professionals in that committee, if I remember all the people that were part of it. But at any rate, it didn't work, and so we decided to change the, to change the direction of our pursuits in the field of arts. But I happened to get a email, and let me just read it. It's a woman who sent an email. She holds a fine arts degree in photography and printmaking. She worked for, I won't mention what state, but she worked for a state as an arts commission, arts and education specialist. She also worked for a city where she was director of the city gallery, which was part of a Bureau of Cultural Affairs. She also curated numerous traveling exhibitions and accompanying catalogs, which are shown at the Whitney Museum in New York City, San Francisco's Museum of Modern Art, and other museums and galleries. She was also the host of an arts-based radio program, and she's currently the art director for a television show. And it's actually, I don't watch it, but I think it's an Emmy award-winning television show. And so that is what I'm looking for. That's what I think this group that we're putting together should be, professional in the arts. And it's not just about management skills. We're all managers, but we need someone, we need people, and I'm glad, Mr. Weaver, I haven't seen those applications, but I'm glad Mr. Weaver is talking about all of the applications that we do have with people that have that type of background. Somehow, because it's the art, the implication is that it's just something casual, that somehow other people can do it, because we're all creative and so forth. Well, you know what? That's not the way it works. We're in Southern California. There are professionals that live in this city, that worked in the arts, literally from the time they were young people, that may have gone to universities, that hold positions in that field, and that's who we have to attract for this nonprofit that we plan to put together and all the planning that goes along with it. That has to be the core group, or we're going to head down another dead-end street like we have been for the past few years. So that's what I'm looking for, and whoever is nominated, I'm going to look for those types of qualifications. And so then, just let me go on to say, there are, there is, happens to be an opening in the audit committee, where the committee will be looking at operations here at the city, procedures, et cetera, et cetera. Quite frankly, I think that's a better, I encourage Mr. Hoffman to, it's my nominee, I encourage Mr. Hoffman to apply for that committee. I think I can, I can get the votes for that. It's a very important committee, because it isn't just about looking at numbers. It's looking at operations of the city, what works, what doesn't work. And so I happen to think that's a much better idea for Mr. Hoffman. I just want to reiterate once again, he's a wonderful person. He's volunteered for so many things. He's done so many things. Been involved in this city, and his wife involved in this city for many, many years. And I'm looking forward to continuing to work with him. Anyway, if nothing else, like Mr. Yusefian mentioned, for sure, this brought Arts and Culture to the forefront of the Glendale news press. So that's the only, I guess, positive thing about it. That's my, that's the way my vote's going to go.
Councilmember Yusefian?
Well, Councilmember Yusefian, my situation is kind of the opposite of yours. You told your wife, you asked her not to speak on this issue. My wife asked me not to speak on this issue. And I do, I follow her advice occasionally, but...
We need a big garage.
And I think, I know that last, and two weeks ago, that this discussion did bring out some strong feelings on the subject, and I do not want to belabor it. I think that the ability of the council to move forward without creating any grudges or any wounds to carry us into the next few months is of the utmost. So I'll be, I'll be very brief on my comments here. I think we're placing excessive scrutiny on Mr. Hoffman's credentials. I think we're straying away from the general principles that we were moving towards as a council, in that each councilman be responsible for his or her nominee to a particular commission. And that started out with the DRB, and we codified it with the DRB, but I think it was a trend that we were going to. And each councilman, when they make their decision to appoint someone or to nominate them, has to be given a certain level of sovereignty, of leeway, in making that decision. Unless a candidate is grossly unqualified, I think we have to give the benefit of any doubt to the nominating councilman. And that's what I, when I seconded it last week and indicated my support for Mr. Hoffman, and the reason I nominated it today, is Mr. Hoffman is not grossly unqualified. True, there may be, there may be a stack of ten resumes for individuals that are much more qualified in the arts, in graphic design, photography, whatever those resumes, resumes hold, but I think Mr. Hoffman has met the threshold of being qualified for the, for this commission. I'm afraid that if we are too scrutinous, then we will be, you know, putting everyone else under the microscope, going back, I don't know who's on the commission now exactly if, well, I know my appointee, the chairman, they said, has no artistic background. I don't know if that's true or not. But I don't want to get into that and start to examine that. It's just a simple matter of, does the nominee hold the basic qualifications? Is he a person of good moral character? For me, that's enough. I have no particular... That's my wife calling me. Why are you talking? And I better stop at that. So thank you.
Still going to the garage.
I'm not sure that that was, you stopped soon enough to avoid the garage, but, well, well.
They deliver pizza to the garages, because you pay.
I haven't changed my view on this. I believe that partly, with no disrespect to my colleague, that that is, what we're hearing is a different standard for arts and culture. In fact, what we're not hearing, when we keep talking about the new, the new way of appointing council member, or board and commission members, that seems to be left out currently, is that originally, several of us asked that council members appoint directly, appoint their nominees, if you will, directly to the boards and commissions. And my colleague argued at that time, "No, no, we can't do it that way, because this council must," the word was "must," "vet" these people who are the nominees. That there had to be council oversight. That was the seriousness that this council set forth with that new way of doing things. So to say now, "We shouldn't do that," because it's, that's where I agree with Mr. Councilmember Quintero, that we have a different sort of, different sort of way of looking at it, because it's, it's the arts. A couple other things I wanted to mention. I think some of the emails that I got in the last week or so have to do, came from people who were in the arts and executive positions, who I think were a bit offended by the characterization of arts and artists as people who are sort of just hopeless, you know, beatniks with berets and goatees that spend their time in coffee houses reciting poetry all night long, when in fact, they are people who are heads of business affairs divisions, people who are entertainment lawyers, people who are executives in many, many ways, many areas of the arts. As Mr. Weaver's reference to the word "shall," I'm more concerned about a different word that's in there, and that was the word "substantial." It was substantial experience in the arts. Now, the only other thing I'm going to say is that, because, Mr. Yusefian, if you think for a minute, I'm going to argue with your wife, I'm not, so...
You're smarter than I am.
Because I'll be joining, I'll be joining the two of you in some other person's doghouse, but I'm not going to go there, except to say that I believe the issue here shouldn't be redefining or reframing what the argument is. This argument has never been about what is art, or what represents an artist. That's never been the argument, and so I've never expressed a definition, strict or otherwise, as to what an artist is or what art is. But I do have a very keen idea of what the definition of the motion that was made, that we, Mr. Quintero, that was passed unanimously, a motion as to where we're going with this. And it has nothing to do with reconstituting an arts commission, or with arts administrators, or anything about the definition of arts or artists. I only know what's in that section of the municipal code, and it says substantial experience in the arts. I don't see that here. I like Mr. Hoffman. Mr. Hoffman and I spoke for about twenty minutes or so after that last meeting. He shared with me what, much of what he said here at the podium, his earnestness to serve, and his, and why he, why he put in his application, how that came about, and so on. As I said, that night, when I let off my comments and completed them, it's not... As I said, that night, when I let off my comments and completed them, it's not a matter of questioning Mr. Hoffman's character integrity. There wasn't a single comment made that evening about Mr. Hoffman's character or integrity. Simply about qualifications and what constitutes qualifications with regard to a task force to create a, a work program for the arts. And for that, I believe, Mr. Hoffman is not qualified in this case. That's not an insult to Mr. Hoffman. There are many, many things I'm not qualified to do. That's not an insult to me. I'm just not qualified to do them. I couldn't do Councilmember Najarian's job. He's a lawyer. I'm not. I couldn't do that. Mr. Yusefian is a contractor and a builder. I don't have a, the foggiest idea about how I would go about doing that. Mr. Weaver's an engineer. Well, I'll just leave it at that, just kidding.
Thank you.
And that takes me, that's the segue to the last thing I'll say, and that is this, there's been also kind of an attempt to redefine the argument, to say that engineers can also be artists. That's not the point. Engineers can be lots of things. They can be airline pilots, they can have dual professions, they could be an engineer and a CPA, or an engineer and an attorney. But the question is about whether this engineer also has a substantial background in the arts. If he were Leonardo da Vinci, I'd have no problem. But he doesn't have that dual, dual background that I see, anyway, here. And so I'm, I'm not inclined to, to change my position on that. But that's, that's the, the extent of my comments on it. If there are any other, if there is any other input, Mr. Yusefian, and then after that, we will, we will entertain the motion.
I have to say, if he was Leonardo da Vinci, he would be multimillionaire, if not billionaire. Nevertheless, at this time, I would like to withdraw my motion, and I will go back and look at someone else.
And I withdraw my second.
I think that ends the issue, then, for the moment, anyway, and we will move on to the next item, then.
At item 3C, appointment of Mr. Zara J. Sananian to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee. And that will be Councilmember Yusefian.
Let me try this one. I'm hoping this one will go easier than that last one. I would like to put forward the nomination of Zari J. Sananian. He went to UCLA and USC.
He's in.
Okay. He has, he got his Juris Doctor from USC. He's an attorney. He has a long list of his accomplishments. He is also being a member of the, our commission in Parks and Recreation. So at this time, I would like to put his name forward for CDBG.
I'll second that, but there's only one problem. There's two guys on that commission with the same name now. Zari.
Oh, with the first name, but two different last names.
Oh, Zari, Zari.
Yeah, two Zaris. One has to be Zara J., and the other one has to be just Zari something else.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We do have a second, Mr. Weaver.
We have a second.
Okay.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes. Next item.
Mayor, I like, I like to make sure that my time has been extended for Arts and Culture Commission, so I don't go to jail.
I, I think that...
Because we're supposed to...
Too late, Mr. Yusefian.
It's too late.
Goes back to the pool.
All right. All right, the next item, please.
At item 3D, nomination assignment for the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission, and that would be Mayor Draymond.
Is that the, is that the vacancy created by this nomination?
I don't know.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. And the next item, please.
Are there any council or staff comments?
Mr. Quintero.
I have gotten telephone calls, emails, et cetera, from the neighborhood surrounding the flyover there at the 134. I know we had a gas company that had certain issues, but I want to have some answer from Mr. Zern, the city manager, about what that situation is going to be like. I mean, we're just starting a project, it's going to last a good two and a half years. And the company that's currently working on that project, in my opinion, and I drove around a few evenings just to make sure that people weren't overstating the issues, that company has to be restricted. It was my understanding there weren't going to be any night, any night work. And, I mean, the whole thing is just a mess. You literally can't even get within blocks of that intersection. It's so screwed up. So we need to do something, because it's not fair to that neighborhood for them to take the kind of punishment that they've been taking these past few weeks. And once again, I emphasize, it's just the beginning of this project. So let's do something. Let's just do something. We have to put this to rest. It's going to be a very long project, and I don't think the neighbors need to bear the brunt of, of all these activities. It's one thing to bear it during the day, but certainly not at night, and late at night, and so forth, so. I'd like to have some answers, if not tonight, then let's talk about it next week, or put it on the agenda, or something. It's, it's just not fair.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Quintero. For the night work portion of it, all of the work that's occurred during the night for the last two and a half weeks has all been associated with the gas company. That's work that was going probably into the early evening regularly. We had them work on weekends, and I'll tell you, one of the reasons that I actually encouraged some of that is to get it out of the way, because it was going to be there twice as long. I think I sent Mr. Starber to note, that you all saw, that there was the cutover, where there are certain gas company procedures that, that we don't have as much control over, and there was a mishap by their contractor that caused them to go deep into the morning. Griffith Company, the company that's doing the actual flyovers, is under contract to us. We've denied all of their night work, as I had stated here to you before. All of those columns that were put in on the wash side, or the river side of San Fernando, were all done during the day, all done by, in normal working hours. We occasionally worked a little overtime till about the 3:30, 4:00, maybe 5:00 range, but all of those were, were installed during regular business hours, and we expect the rest of the, the columns that are going in Fairmont to be the same. So...
Let me ask you a quick question. Do we still have the public outreach person?
Yes.
Well, how about getting that person to walk that neighborhood and knock on some doors, and let the people know what's going on? Because quite frankly, there's a lot of older people that live on that street, by the way. I don't think they know what's going on. So why doesn't that person, just on a human level, knock on some doors and let them know what's going on? So at least they can figure in the next two years, they're not going to be subjected to what they've been subjected to for the past few weeks.
And Mr. Quintero, we can certainly do that. We've been trying to keep close contact with the Pellicconi Estates Homeowners Association, which generally represents most of that area, so...
Right, but those specific streets, Mr. Zern, and you know which ones they are. You know, the ones that are... Pellicconi goes all the way up to Highland, or whatever, but, you know, let the person just knock on some doors and let them know.
They can do that.
I'm from the city, and I know you, what you've been through, so, you know, hopefully it's going to be better in the future. That might be a good idea. That's what they are. They're the ones that are supposed to do the outreach to, to residents.
We can certainly do that.
I have a question along the same lines, Mr. Zern. When, when is the gas company doing this? Do they have to get some kind of a verance or permission in order to do the night work?
Mr. Mayor, they operate a little differently. They're under a franchise agreement, and certain service and commerce for them is regulated by that document, and in certain circumstances, we don't have the authority to stop them. Although, let me, before I say that, I mean, I think I made this clear in the note I sent, they have been extremely cooperative with us. We tried to keep them away from, from late night work for the majority of the project, but when it came to that service cutover, the actually going from one, the old line to the new line, their policy is they can't interrupt service delivery during that period. And so they have to work all the way through till it's done. We attempted to even, at one point, when this mishap occurred, to stop them, they could not do that. If for no other reason, I also think I mentioned, it would have interrupted gas flow to Greason Power Plant, which is the biggest customer they had on that line. So while they've been very cooperative, we've, we've, we've pushed them and prodded them along, there are certain aspects that are regulated by the, the franchise that they're somewhat out of our control with regards to permits inspections.
Okay, all right. On this topic, or do...
Not directly.
Okay. Councilmember Najarian.
And it's not directly on this, but it does involve some of the complaints by the Pellicconi Homeowners Association. That was with regard to the reconstruction of the median on San Fernando Road. And they were offended that, in their opinion, they were being treated like a second-class neighborhood by the median being composed of a stamped concrete material. And I thought that was rather bad, until I went out to my main street, which is Canyata, between Verdugo and La Crescenta, and there were the contractors redoing the median with a stamped concrete material. So the, I know that we had voted on, I think that's part of the ADA and curb cut repairs, I think, are there being done in conjunction in that neighborhood. But why are we using stamped concrete? I mean, it is, you know, there's good earth underneath it, you have trees there, presumably there's some sort of irrigation already in place. Why are we going to the stamped concrete rather than a, at least a minimum type of ground cover on those medians? It apparently is some sort of citywide standard that we're doing. I mean, that's what San Fernando Road folks were complaining about, and it's, and for those out there in Pellicconi, it's not just your neighborhood, it's, it's all the way up, apparently. So what's the deal with that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, first, I'll address the San Fernando Road. What you read, or what you've heard, is not quite accurate. There is landscaping on those medians. We provided the Pellicconi Estates Homeowners Association with a set of plans, five sheets, I think. I'm not sure they caught the landscape plan that's on there, but there is stamped concrete. Instead of using straight concrete or asphalt infill, on the ends, we'll use the stamped concrete to add some decorative nature to it. But there are trees, shrubs, and ground cover going on the medians on San Fernando Road. Yes.
Well, that's better than Montecito Park neighborhood.
We do...
Why are we second-class? You're paying more attention to the folks south of the 134 than north.
You don't complain enough.
The second, the second part regarding your neighborhood is, where we do curb and gutter work, and in this case, we're also, I believe, in that area cutting out a new left turn pocket that was a result of some requests from the neighbors. We didn't, our budget didn't include landscaping, so what there was there was pretty shabby asphalt. We decided to do some level of upgrade by pulling the asphalt out and, and putting in some stamped concrete.
Well, you might hear from, from our homeowners association. And they, you know, Patrick Mussehe has nothing on our group, let me tell you, once they get riled up. The other point I'd like to make to the, the city in general is, this is National Walk to School Week. And our local schools are observing that by encouraging all the children, at least in the elementary schools, to walk to school, rather than have mommy and daddy drive you the .8 miles to get to school, and wait in a long line, and drop you off, and come back in the afternoon. So there are a lot more little children on the roads, crossing the streets, maybe a little hesitant about whether they should go, or whether it's your turn. So a little bit of extra caution by everyone in the community would go a long way. We don't want to discourage any of the children or the parents from letting the little students walk to school, get a little healthy activity beforehand, and just look out for the little ones. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Couple of, well, first, let me go to Rita Buchanan, our Assistant City Clerk, because I inadvertently forgot her, about her, she had announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, councilmembers, I'd like to remind everyone that the annual rabies clinic will be held this coming Thursday, October 9th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. The clinic will be held at two locations, the city parking structure, located at 650 East Wilson, and Fire Station Number 28 at 4410 New York Avenue in La Crescenta. Rabies vaccinations for dogs will be $6. The six-in-one vaccination will be $14, and Boratella at $11. For cats, the rabies vaccine will be $6 as well, and the four-in-one vaccine will be $14. The dogs must be four months or older, and cats, three months or older. And please be reminded that all dogs must be on a leash, and cats inside an enclosed container. And we'll, we encourage all the pet owners in the community to take advantage of this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan. Let me go to Hassan Hagani, who has an announcement.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. Mr. Mayor, I, we would like to, the Planning Department would like to announce that we are having two upcoming workshops in La Crescenta. One will be on Monday, October 13th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at Clark Magnet High School. This will be the first workshop where we will be doing the visioning for the Crescenta Valley area planning. And this covers all of the jurisdictions that are located in the Crescenta Valley. And the following workshop will be the following Monday, on October the 20th, again, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at the same location, Clark Magnet High School. We invite everyone from Glendale and other parts of the Crescenta Valley to attend. It's open to everybody. Each workshop has a different focus, so we encourage everyone to attend both. The first one will be to identify the boundaries and characteristics that define the Crescenta Valley in the views of the residents, and the business owners, and the property owners. And the second one will be identifying issues facing the Crescenta Valley, and what we, the, the folks envision for its future, and how planning can be a tool for doing so. We'll then prepare a report to the City Council on how we think we could approach that planning. Thank you very much. And for more information, people can call the Planning Department at 818-548-2140, and ask to speak with Alan Loomis or Lars Stotler. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagani. Mr. Yusefian.
May I, may I suggest that the staff run this on, on, on GTV6, you know, wh- before this takes place? So this way, the public will get to see it over and over and over again. Because the last thing we want to do, this is a very important thing, I don't want people to come to us and say, gee, we didn't, we didn't know about it. I don't mean you have to show it. I mean, just, just give this to GTV6 and have them run it out.
We have done that, and they have been running it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I, were there any other staff or council comments? No, I have a couple of things. One is, I'd like to announce the Unity Fest, which is this Sunday, and it looks like it's going to cool off, so human beings won't just spontaneously combust, you know, burst into flames while walking around. Supposed to be fairly cool this weekend, we, we hear. Unity Fest is different this year than it has been in the past. It has been at Verdugo Park, and this year, for the first time, it will be on Brand Boulevard, between Lexington and California, from the hours of 11 a.m. until 4 p.m. And a lot of your favorite activities will still be there. There'll be an international food court, excuse me, and arts and crafts, and so on, but this year, the, and I'm actually quite proud of it, this year, the Montrose Shopping Park Association, instead of just contributing financially to the event, which they've done in the past, is sending the entire Montrose Harvest Market on tour, if you will, to the Unity Fest. So they will be there with antiques and collectibles, and fresh baked goods, cut flowers, plants, there'll be nurseries there, food vendors, as well as packaged food and specialty food. And there'll be a children's area that will include rides, and I think our climbing wall will be there, park, the park rangers will be there with the climbing wall, as well as pony rides, and our park and play, and the bookmobile. And that will all be, in addition to all of the, the usual cultural activities, the Inca Peruvian musical ensemble, the Visa Band, the Japanese Taiko Drums, Azteca Dance Group, Chinese Lion Dragon Group, and so on, Media City Ballet, Russian Nutcracker, and the Folklorico Group, and so on. So there's a lot of activities out there, and we've tied it in with the merchants and so on on Brand Boulevard. So it should be a wonderful day. And it's also the time to, once again, thank Councilmember Bobby Sefian for bringing unity... And it's also the time to, once again, thank Councilmember Bobby Sefian for bringing Unity Fest to Glendale. How many years ago now, Mr. Sefian?
This will be five, six.
Six years, six years ago. So, please do come out, enjoy, bring your families, it'll be a great day. And it is free, and the parking is free, too. Free parking at the Orange Street Garage, Sunday, this Sunday, Brand Boulevard between California and Lexington from 11:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. The second item is I'd like to compliment the Glendale Unified School District and their board, their school board, as well as Dr. Escalante, for their incredible State of the Schools breakfast. I say incredible, your mayor doesn't usually do so well at 7:00 a.m., but I was there, bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, with about a couple hundred other people seeing the school's accomplishments and seeing just how well they've done, hearing Senator Scott speak and so on. It was just a terrific program, and I'd like to share with you, the placemats that were there were art that was done by, Councilmember Yusefian was there as well, by a different student within the primary, one of the primaries in Glendale. This was my placemat, happened to be by Huriel Moreno, a kindergartner at Horace Mann Elementary School. And this is an opportunity to give a big plug for one of my favorite principals in the Glendale District, Rosa Alonso, who has just done an incredible job since coming to Horace Mann. And it really was a great program.
It was.
So, congratulations to our colleagues across the street at the Glendale Unified School District. And lastly, just to, well, a little something that was, you all know Ruth Moore.
Yes.
And I had the opportunity to speak at the Glendale Women's Civic League the other day, and she sent a copy of this along for me to share. It's sort of an updated Glendale City version. Have you heard this, Councilmember Yusefian? Because I see you laughing. It's a sort of a Glendale updated version, what happened when Noah was asked to build an ark in the year 2000. And it's, let's just take a moment to share it with you. "In the year 2008, the Lord came to Noah, who was now living in the United States, and said, 'Once again, the earth has become a wicked and overpopulated place, and I see the end of all flesh before me. Build another ark and save two of every living thing, along with a few good humans.' He gave Noah the blueprints, saying, 'You have six months to build the ark before I will start an unending rain for 40 days and 40 nights.' Six months later, the Lord looked down and saw Noah weeping in his yard, but no ark. 'Noah,' he roared, 'I'm about to start the rain. Where is the ark?' 'Forgive me, Lord,' begged Noah, 'but things have changed. I need a building permit. I've been arguing with the inspector about the need for a sprinkler system. My neighbors claim that I have violated the neighborhood zoning laws by building an ark in my yard and exceeding the height limitations with no story poles. We had to go to the DRB Alternative Assessment Panel as well for a decision. Then the Department of Transportation demanded a bond be posted for the future costs of improving power lines and other overhead obstructions to clear passage for the ark to move it to the sea. I told them that the sea would come to us, but they would hear nothing of it. Getting the wood was another problem. There's an indigenous tree ordinance, you see, and that therefore is a ban on cutting local trees in order to save the spotted owl. I tried to convince the environmentalists that I needed the wood to build the ark so I could save the owls, but no go. When I started gathering the animals, animal rights group sued me. They insisted I was confining wild animals against their will, and they argued the accommodations were too restrictive, and it was cruel and inhumane to put so many animals in a confined space. Then the EPA ruled that I couldn't build the ark until they conducted an EIR, and that is an environmental impact report, on the proposed flood. And then the unions came to see me and said that I could not use my sons to build the ark. They insisted I had to hire only union workers with ark-building experience. To make matters worse, the IRS seized all my assets, claiming I'm trying to leave the country illegally with endangered species. So, forgive me, Lord, but it would take at least 10 years for me to finish the ark. And suddenly, the skies cleared, and the sun began to shine, and a rainbow stretched across the sky. Noah looked up in wonder and asked, 'You mean you're not going to destroy the world?' And the Lord said, 'No, the government has beat me to it.' So, and I thought that was kind of cute, and I want to thank Ruth Moore for sending that around. And with that, if there are any other announcements, looks like there aren't, let us move on to the next item.
Item five, A through J are consent items. They are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
All right. I have a request to pull items E, like Edward, I, like Island, and J, like John. Do we have a motion for the, okay, with those exceptions, all right.
Mayor, I will abstain for the minutes of September 9th. I was absent.
September 9th, did you say?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Let us vote on those items.
I didn't hear a second.
Second.
We had a second, or? Mr. Weaver.
Councilmembers Najarian-
Yes.
Quintero-
Yes.
Weaver, Yusefian-
Aye, with extension on September 9th.
And Mayor Drayman.
Yes. Did we hear the item at 5E?
Item 5E, Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services Regarding Authorization of Resolution and Support of the California Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights. At 5E1 is a resolution supporting the California Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights.
Mayor Drayman, members of the council, I'd like to introduce Mark Stertavan, who's our grant writer, senior administrative analyst, who's been working with the county and a number of other organizations regionally and statewide on the Children's Bill of Rights. We're really excited about it. So, I'd like, Mark, to give just a 60-second presentation on what those Children's Bill of Rights are and what we're doing with the other agencies.
Thank you. Mayor Drayman, members of council, I just want to take a moment to thank you for considering the resolution at 5E, supporting the California Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights. The Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights movement began in California about four years ago, when a group of recreation professionals, members of the academic community, and members of the recreation profession sought to find a way to focus attention on the fact that there is a disconnect today between children and outdoor activities. The object of the Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights is to promote a fundamental list of life experiences that every child in California should have by the age of 14. These include the opportunity to discover California's past, splash in the water, play in a safe place, camp under the stars, explore nature, learn to swim, play on a team, follow a trail, catch a fish, and celebrate their heritage. And by approving this resolution, you'll join Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger, the counties of Los Angeles and San Bernardino, the cities of Paso Robles and San Luis Obispo, and the California Parks and Recreation Society in recognizing that children need to get off their couches, get out of their living rooms, and get outside and play. The research is conclusive. Children who participate in outdoor activities are healthier, they do better in school, they have better social skills and a stronger self-image, and they lead more fulfilled lives. Now, this Saturday, the Parks Recreation and Community Services Department, in collaboration with LA County Parks, the National Park Service, California State Parks, the U.S. Forest Service, and the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy, will sponsor an all-day outdoor recreation event at the Santa Fe Dam Recreation Area. And we're going to be bringing a number of students from Edison Elementary out to the recreation area, and they'll be playing with a number of kids from around the county for a day of healthy activities, recreational activities in the great outdoors, including fishing, swimming, hiking, bicycle riding, and other activities. So, once again, we appreciate your consideration of this resolution in support of the California Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights.
Move 5E1, second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stertavan. Thank you, Mr. Chapchan. Do we have a motion and a second?
Councilmembers Najarian-
Yes.
Quintero-
Yes.
Weaver-
Aye.
Yusefian-
Aye.
Mayor Drayman.
Yes. Did we hear the item at 5I?
Item 5I, Director of Public Works Regarding Appropriation for the Purchase of Nine Glendale Beeline Buses. At 5I1 is a resolution appropriating $2,884,604.
Okay. Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you. I asked this to be pulled. This is some good news. We've been talking about these buses for quite some time. Eighty percent of the money is coming from Metro. And in addition to these nine, we have money for some more coming through, for some other sources as well.
That is correct, Mr. Najarian.
For a total of 16? Did we cost out 16, or we-
15. I think six is in the 2010, 2011 grant that we received that you were very instrumental in helping us get.
So, these are going to be brand-new buses. We won't have to hear from, not that we don't like hearing from Dr. Spirit, but many of his concerns regarding the maintenance, the air conditioning units that have failed, lifts and doors and all the other things should be taken care of. With these brand-new, brand spanking new buses, CNG-
CNG.
Non-polluting or very low-
Polluting.
CNG pollutes to some degree, if I'm not mistaken. Now, my question is, on these buses, are we going to equip them with the LCD TVs? Okay, I suggest we do that, because I think we can get them at no cost. The advertiser will pay for them and will pay us revenue for having them display ads intermingled with news clips and, you know, whether it's a CNN or some sort of news reports.
We'll look into that.
And announce, announces the stations as well. I think we can probably tie it into our next bus system and actually graphically show the location of the bus along the route.
We will definitely-
So, I think that would be a very good, no-cost, whether it can be, I think it can probably be retrofitted-
I believe.
If it's not done at the manufacturer. In addition, how about the Drive Cam, where there's a camera? We do have those.
We have those in our buses now.
We do have them now.
Yes.
Okay, great. On the driver-
The driver shows the back, shows the side door.
And everyone in the back. So, Noah complains about breaking an arm when they go over a bump or whatever.
Correct, or misbehavior by a passenger or driver.
That is great, and-
And the fare boxes will be-
Yes, state-of-the-art.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We happy to move 5I.
Second.
And we want that with the recommendation to do that if we can, if possible.
Yes, let's include that to-
For the LCDs.
I think that's the exact name of the-
The advertising screens.
Right.
I think that needs to come back to us, because there may be a cost involved.
If there is a cost involved.
I think there's no cost. They will put it in, they run their ads, and they give you advertising money on top of it.
One way or the other, I'll report back.
Mr. Garcia.
I was just going to say, it should come back if it's a separate item.
Okay, let's do that. Mr. Quintero.
Just to make a quick comment, the CNG gas-powered engines are so much cleaner than the diesel. And in addition to that, it's obviously CNG from, may even be from California, who knows? But certainly from North America, so it far surpasses any of the other petroleum products that we use. It's great, very happy to hear that.
Are they quieter as well, the new generation?
Yeah.
Because I know we hear complaints, and a lot of it are just the maintenance of the engines, the age, and the fan belts, and the pulleys sort of clanking away as they pull up.
That definitely, you know, can exacerbate the situation, but straight-up diesel versus a CNG, CNG is quieter. We found that both with the buses and with our refuse trucks.
Well, even our current CNG engines are a little bit noisy and clanky and-
They're a little bit old, too.
They're pushing the envelope.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? There is none, as we can.
Councilmembers Najarian-
Yes.
Quintero-
Yes.
Weaver-
Aye.
Yusefian-
Aye.
Mayor Drayman.
Yes. Could we hear the item at 5J?
At item 5J, Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services Regarding 2008 Decorations on Brand Boulevard. At 5J1 is a resolution dispensing with the competitive bidding process and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with CR lights in the amount of $65,785 plus a 15% contingency of $9,867.75.
Thank you very much, Ms. Buchanan. The reason I ask for this item to be pulled has to do with just a clarification, and Mr. Chapchan, if you could, just clarify for the public and my colleagues, my concern was the implication that this gives, that the cost of doing this is $65,000, $65,000 and change, and it doesn't, that's just the contract with CR. The total cost of the entire holiday lighting materials and labor is in excess of $100,000. And the reason I wanted to ask you to clarify is because we hope that next year, there might be another way to go that might be a little less expensive.
Mr. Mayor Drayman, it is, the $65,000 is just for the labor, and we are going to be purchasing additional decorations, and also, all told, it will be about $100,000. And we are looking at different ways of doing this to save money for the Merchants Association and provide more service out there for Brand Boulevard. And we're going to be working with Public Works to try to see where there are some commonalities and some needs for staffing out there, so we can use this money, or a little bit less than this, to service the Brand Boulevard merchants. So, at some point next year, we hope that this will be a lot cheaper and more service.
Councilmember Najarian.
Do we just dispose of these lights after we use them?
No, we don't dispose of them. We hold on to them, and then whatever's broken, they, we replace. We are buying new lights at this point. We don't just dispose of them.
The, I think the-
Some of them are cut down.
Yeah, the clarification is some of the lights can't be reused.
Right.
But some of the expense for decor, decorations, lighted items, deer, that sort of thing, can be reused from year to year, although it does have to be maintained.
Right, we have nutcrackers, we have big boxes that we're buying, gift boxes, sort of like, decorations.
To the extent that this is under the Parks Commission's purview, can you look at some sponsorship opportunities?
We certainly can.
I mean, I don't mean, you know, Merry Christmas brought to you by so-and-so BMW or something, but I've seen other cities with tasteful sponsorship recognition throughout their displays, so.
Chapchan, you might explain where the funds come from.
They do come from the Merchants Association. It is an assessment for the Brand Boulevard merchants. That's why the money is very limited in terms of what we can and cannot do with it. At first, we thought we would hire some staff, have the staff work on just the lights, and then take those staff and place them outside the city, outside the Brand Boulevard area to service other parks. Found out that we couldn't do that. They have to be within Brand Boulevard, yeah, within that district.
Thank you, Mr. Chapchan. I appreciate that. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Yusefian.
How much, how much do the merchants pay toward this endeavor?
All of it. It comes from the Merchants Association. Hundred percent.
They pay all of it, so they're going to pay the $100,000.
Yes, they do every year.
On their assessment. But wasn't the assessment partly to also take care of Brand, clean the Brand and all the stuff, or is it separate item?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, it is altogether an assessment that I bring to you annually, but in-
Separate accounts.
Original resolution, it was for the maintenance. We added the holiday decorations later, but that was an agreement that 100% of the holiday decorations are picked up. Not 100% of the trash collection, pressure washing, and so forth is picked up.
And have the merchants agreed to this number?
That's what went out in their assessment.
And they agreed to this?
They-
You got no protests?
No.
Okay.
However, we are looking next year at substantially reducing that. We are looking at ways of reducing that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, Ms. Buchanan.
I don't have a motion and a second.
Don't have a motion and a second.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. There we are.
Councilmembers Najarian-
Yes.
Quintero-
Yes.
Weaver-
Aye.
Yusefian-
Aye.
Mayor Drayman.
Yes, okay. The next item, which would normally be the announcement portion of oral communications, we have already done, so let us move on to item seven.
At item, at item 7A, Director of Community Development and Housing and City Attorney Regarding Describing Minor Changes to the Smoking Regulations Ordinance Introduced on September 30th, 2008 and Describing Outreach and Education Efforts to Implement New Restrictions on Second-Hand Smoke. At 7A1 is an ordinance amending Chapter 8.52.010 through 8.52.080, adding Sections 8.52.090 through 8.52.230, amending Section 1.20.010D and adding Section 9.30.30, I'm sorry, 030L. three-zero, I'm sorry, zero-three-zero L and, and the GMC, of the GMC nineteen ninety-five relating to smoking in public places and common areas of multi-unit rental housing, offered on September thirtieth by Councilwoman Weaver. At seven A two is a resolution appropriating one hundred five thousand dollars. At seven A three is a motion approving smoking restrictions enforcement implementation plan and outreach strategy.
Thank you, that was not easy, I could tell.
It was classic.
All right, just some housekeeping, let me turn to our. I've been asked several times, several ways, by several different people, whether or not we would be taking speakers for this, and I am going to do that, but if you could, Mr. Garcia, just for the record, clarify whether there is a need for that, and I believe there is in this case, for a couple of reasons, one, we've, we're talking about additions to the ordinance, and, and also it was not a public hearing per se.
It was not a public hearing, a comment was taken at the prior meeting, and there probably would be some discretion to limit discussion, repeat discussion, however, it's totally the mayor's discretion, we recommend that you allow people the opportunity to speak on the issues they want to speak on, I would add that the resolution of appropriation is also a new item that people would have the opportunity to speak on as well.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, Mr. Yusefian.
I have a question on one item, and that has to do with the sixty thousand dollars program specialists for smoking ambassador. I'd like to know that sixty thousand dollars is an annual cost, or is it a one-time cost, or what is this smoking ambassador?
Mr. Engel.
Do, smoke around?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, councilmember Yusefian, this is a one-time cost, we built into the outreach strategy a, a plan similar to what our friends in Burbank experienced, that they felt that having a person that could go out there and explain one-on-one, very similar to what you asked Mr. Zern to do in the neighborhood regarding the flyover, is go out and explain what's going on and how people could comply with our ordinance if we were going to do it. We see it as a very limited duration, this is for an hourly position for one year from the time we start, so presumably if you were to adopt the resolution, it'd run approximately from January one of oh-nine through December thirty-first.
I'm assuming that that individual will spend some time with some of the staff members in the city, in neighborhood services, maybe the city manager's office, where people call for information, so at least they have some understanding of what it is.
Councilmember Yusefian, members of the council, I think that'd be a part of their job. In my, in my mind, in trying to think this through, we thought the majority, the majority of their time is going to be working with apartment owners, restaurant owners, and the owners and tenants of the larger commercial buildings. In our mind, in listening to the council discussion, we felt that's where the, the real impact of one-on-one's going to be, but certainly, when we are talking about this as a group of staff people, this will be a citywide effort to do this, that, working with Parks and Recreation, even with our planning department and Public Works, as the major departments that are going to have some impact resulting from this, absolutely. Everybody needs to know what's going on with this so that we provide the best possible information, because this is a big step forward for the city.
Because that one person trying to just deal with forty-four thousand units, just apartments.
That's right, that's absolutely right.
That'd be almost impossible.
Let me go out of turn here then, because it's on the same topic that Mr. Yusefian was raising, that was a note I had also, and I assume this was, as you say, based on Burbank's success with their enforcement efforts, in the implementation of their more restrictive ordinance, their education program that went into it, and that's one of the reasons we're doing this, trying to take a page out of their experience, I assume.
Mayor Drayman, members of the council, absolutely. When we talked with them, all the way back in March, when you first brought this up, they said one of the critical things for them was actually having somebody out there able to do something different than issue a citation, be able to talk to people and work with people through the idiosyncrasies of, of a change of, of community philosophy was very important, and it was their recommendation that we not send anything to you without having this as a component.
All right, and I have one last request on that one, and I don't know how my colleagues are going to feel about it, but is there a way, instead of calling this person a smoking ambassador, we can call him a non-smoking ambassador?
I think that would be a great recommendation.
Okay, thank you, thank you, all right. Okay, other comments, questions, input, Mr. Quintero, Mr. Weaver?
No, I have a question in a minute.
Okay, well, I don't think anybody else has any other comments or questions.
I'm trying to remember where I saw it, it said in there, in the directions, not in the ordinance, but in the directions, the warnings, it talked about any person could give the warning not to smoke, and the ordinance says, everybody but, well, it could be the city manager, it could be officials, whatever, but in the enforcement implement plan, it says anybody. I read that and I says, I'm certainly not going to walk up to anybody and tell them, so whatever that spots in here, I think you better correct it.
Okay, we can certainly do that.
I'll find it before the speakers are done.
Okay, okay. Let us go to our speakers then, and we'll do two minutes. Robert Phipps, followed by Nancy Kent.
Good evening, Mayor Drayman, members of the council, staff, do we have three minutes on this, Mayor?
Forty-seven.
Two minutes, thank you.
I know what's in there.
No smoking in restaurants or bar patios, no exceptions. We know it's the right thing, we all do. Give quality of life and health to all children, and eighty-five percent of adults prohibit indiscriminate indulgence of addiction by only fifteen percent of adults, the cruel people who don't pay for our health expenses. Help all restaurant owners, not just the, the rich, smart restaurant owners like these laws. The city makes the decision, the owners get to keep both smokers and non-smokers as customers, and give yourselves a benefit by showing voters you have the courage of a frog. It's not about property rights, if it were, we'd still have slavery, which was always about life versus property ownership, nor would women have any rights, because they were property of their husbands, they were called chattel, a form of the word cattle. Fifty years ago, half the adults in this country smoked, now it's under twenty percent. In fifty more years, smoking will be gone, the way snuff and chewing tobacco are now. California leads the world in human rights, we don't have to wait fifty years to do what we know is right. It took hundreds of years to get rid of slavery and to give women their human rights, and we all knew all along what was right and what was wrong. A frog wouldn't wait, a frog wouldn't crawl from one step, one year, one decade at a time, a frog would make one leap from here to there, have the courage of a frog, take us from here to there, right now, leapfrog us from where we are now to where we all know we should be, pass the right law, keep smoking away from all non-smokers in all places, forget ten feet, twenty feet designated smoking areas, pass a good ordinance, take us there, leap us there, have the heart of a frog. Thank you.
Please, please, next speaker Nancy Kent, followed by Kimberly Sinclair, and before Nancy speaks, I found what I was talking about, it's on the enforcement implementation plan, exhibit way one, normal enforcement, it says, a person or a city representative was taken directly out of the ordinance, and there's a preceding paragraph ahead that says who those persons are, so Mr. Garcia's already noted it, and we'll correct it.
We'll correct that.
Thank you. Okay, Nancy?
Nancy Kent, resident of Glendale, thank you for increasing the no-smoking areas in Glendale. Last week, when city staff answered a question from a man who works at a private business campus, it was stated that smoking will be permitted outdoors between the buildings since the public is not allowed there. Question, since the ordinance says no person shall smoke in or within a twenty-foot distance from a place of employment, will smoking be prohibited in a twenty-foot radius around each building on this private company campus? Please consider tightening this up so the ordinance defines place of employment to include the entire business campus, since that definition already includes an outdoor work area, a construction site, or a parking lot that an employee or, and it's interesting, it has the word or, the general public may enter in the normal course of operations. Next point, a few weeks ago during oral communications, I asked for clarification of your intent about sidewalks in front of places of employment. The answer then was the ordinance was not finalized, last week I ran out of time before I asked this again. Since the ordinance says no person shall smoke in or within a twenty-foot distance from a place of employment, does that mean that in theory, smoking will be prohibited on sidewalks in front of all stores and office buildings unless they're set back twenty feet from the sidewalk? That is fine with me, but I am just asking if that is your intent, thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Sinclair, followed by Amy Clem.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Sinclair, I teach health at Glendale High School, and I've been watching the news about the financial bailout, and they keep saying over and over again on television, the two things you don't want to watch being made are sausage and legislation. Please don't make me come back here, please vote and please pass this ordinance, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Amy Clem, followed by John Gantis.
Good evening, Mayor Drayman, city council members and staff. I'm sure it won't shock anyone here when I tell you that I'm terrified of public speaking. Every time I get up here, it's all I can do to read off my paper, breathe, and not pass out, but I keep, keep coming back and putting myself through it because it's made an impact. Each time I've been before you, and that's been quite a few times in the last eleven years, you have always listened. We may not have always agreed on every point, but you always took my concerns and interests to heart, and I want to thank you for that. Tonight, I'm asking you once again to take my concerns and nerves to heart and adopt the smoking ordinance before you tonight. I know decisions like this are not always easy to make, especially when some feel it's too restrictive, and others feel it's not restrictive enough, but it is a huge leap in the right direction, and it's long overdue. I have every confidence you will see past the smoke and do the right thing tonight, especially since I'm still standing. Thank you, and I really do mean thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clem. John Gantis, followed by Harry Hull.
I brought pictures, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my name is John Gantis, and I am located in the city of Glendale, and I'm here representing the Phoenician Restaurant. While it is not, it is not a surprise, as they've said before, that, that restaurants are going to be impacted by the, the no-smoking ordinance, as I've indicated to my client, and I'm sure most of the restaurants know, that trains out of the station. The key here is to make it palatable for all people. While I, I don't know the percentages, I've read the staff report that says seventy percent of people do not smoke, the truth of the matter is, for the Phoenician Restaurant, as you can see, there are a substantial number of outdoor, I refer you to the top portion of this, outdoor areas. I've asked my client to quantify this, there are, in those areas of those tables that you see there, that's all the outdoor area, there are a hundred and sixty-one people that are authorized to be there. Under this ordinance, calling for twenty-five percent, that would limit the amount of, of smokers to forty people, it can be done, by the way, under the ordinance, and we want to do that. However, I asked him to quantify how many people are there currently. He says on any given night, ninety percent of his tables are filled with people, which means there are that smoke, that there are a hundred and forty-four people that currently smoke, and reducing this to forty will have a substantial impact. As you can see from this diagram, we believe, and we know we can, meet the fifty percent threshold, which would be more than ten feet, as you can see from the diagram, from the non-smoking areas, and still accomplish the same thing, which is, I agree, non-smoking. I quit smoking on September thirty, nineteen seventy-four. So I, I would request that the ordinance at eight point one, five-two-point-one-two-oh be amended to go to fifty percent rather than twenty-five percent. In addition, my client indicates to me that in Burbank, which is, I understand, the, the model of this, that hookah smoking, which is of course a very large portion of our community engages in, is, is also allowed, it's not part of the smoking restriction, I didn't look that up, but I'm told that's the case, and that maybe we look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gantis. Right, Harry Hull, followed by Esther Schiller.
Good evening, gentlemen, I'm Harry Hull, I'm very proud to serve as the Chamber of Commerce President this year for our city, so I'm happy to be here on behalf of the chamber. It's important for us to be here tonight because we've been involved in the process right along, and I wanted to say, once again quickly, to thank you, make sure that you know that the staff worked very hard with us and other groups in drafting the ordinance, we're very appreciative of the staff listening and, and modifying and changing various parts, and we appreciated it, and I just wanted you to know that again. There are many small tweaks that have to be done in the implementation, I think it's going to be, the implementation plan that you have in front of you tonight is going to require a lot of hand-holding to get through it. One of the components is an implementation task force, and one thing I'd like tonight to ask if we could be a part of that task force. We think we could do a great job in concert with the city staff, based on what, how far we've come so far on this issue, and we appreciate it again, I'd like to be a part of that task force if, if we pass this ordinance, so thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hull. Esther Schiller, followed by Anahid Panigian.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Esther Schiller, I'm director of SAFE, which stands for Smoke-Free Air for Everyone, I'm also director of our project, the Smoke-Free Apartment House Registry. Our website at www.smoocfreeapartments.org lists the vacancies of apartment owners who've made their apartment buildings non-smoking, including the units. However, many apartment owners don't know that it is legal to offer a non-smoking building to tenants, yet surveys statewide show that more than eighty percent of apartment residents would prefer to live in a non-smoking environment. Your ordinance, which will regulate smoking in Glendale, specifically states that an apartment owner can make a building non-smoking. This will be very helpful for landlords and for tenants. The staff report, which explains the proposed outreach and education efforts which will assist in the implementation of the new ordinance, is very excellent, as staff suggests, if people are informed about the requirements of the ordinance, they will comply. We hope that you saw the editorial in the Glendale News Press, which complimented the council for your actions to make Glendale a healthier city, and we also would like to be part of the implementation task force, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schiller. Anahid Panigian.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Drayman, members of city councils and staff, I am Anahid Panigian. I am pleased to take part in this meeting to thank all the members of the city, mayor, councils, attorney, manager, and the neighborhood services staff that work hard on this project to make a fair solution as a proposed smoking ban ordinance in the Glendale city, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. That is our last speaker, let me go back to my colleagues and see if they have any input or comments. Mr. Yusefian, your hand was up first.
I would like to have staff answer the questions that was asked by the speaker,
Whenever Mrs. Kent was up here, councilman Yusefian, members of the council, we leaned to each other and said yes. Now I'll go back and repeat the question, which was, does the ban on smoking in place of employment extend the twenty feet out onto the sidewalk? And the answer would be yes.
All the way around.
All the way around.
Okay, so the only place you can really smoke on the sidewalk is going to be in residential Because most commercial property is right on the sidewalk.
Yes.
And, and after that commercial property is finished, there's another commercial property, and there's another one, then there's another one, so consequently, if that is the case, then you can't really smoke anywhere on Brand Boulevard or Central, or any places that is commercial building.
It's within the entrances.
Correct?
I, I need to correct this, what she asked was, was it within? What she asked was, was it within 20 feet of the entrance? And the answer is in, within 20 feet of the entrance?
That was not the question. I think she asked within 20 feet of place of employment.
Now, it's within 20 feet of the entrance.
So it's 20 feet of the entrance.
Right.
Does the ordinance say that? Because I think it says, it's vague. It doesn't say, when I read it, that was one of my questions. Sorry for jumping in.
All right, jump in.
Yeah, because it was.
We're making it easier on the non-smoking ambassador.
Yes.
My look at section 8.52.050 indicates smoking is prohibited within a 20-foot distance from a place of employment.
Right, it is. It's not the entrance.
Not the entrance, but a place of employment, which would imply the whole building, perimeter of the building.
So does that make sense?
What is the intent? And let me turn to, well, thank you for that. Don't go far away. I think Councilmember Yusefian might have some more questions, but just on that issue, Mr. Starber.
And maybe along with that, when we're answering that, is a restaurant a place of employment?
Yes, it is.
In which case, how would you have, are we specifically exempt than outdoor dining?
It was actually a question, as you already said, well, I, there's a couple ways you can do it. You can tie it back to the entrance, or the section on, and I'm going to have to ask Mr. Grant to chime in here too, on the definition of outdoor, where permitted smoking areas and outdoor dining areas, it says notwithstanding this section, can also include the section to say notwithstanding the section that bans it from places of employment, it will be permitted in a permitted smoking area in an outdoor area. And we can probably, we'll have to get you the exact language before you take action tonight, so.
Says.
What section is that? Oh, 8.52.120 says even though section 8.52070 of this chapter prohibits smoking in an outdoor dining area, my suggestion would be just, if that's the council's intent, would just say, even though sections 8.52050 and 8.52070 of this chapter prohibit smoking, that way you cover that exception as well.
I was under impression at the time we passed this ordinance that it's going to be 20 feet from an entrance, which is easier to understand, because if you're going to include it within 20 feet of all buildings.
Now, that's my understanding as well.
Well, my.
Block wall.
My suggestion is just make the change here. I think it's still germane to the main issue of the ordinance that was introduced, so the council can just make the change here on a motion.
My suggestion was going to be, and just make the specific change in 52.050.
Right.
You just add the word "from the entrance of a place of employment."
I would agree to that. I would think you'd also want to add my language, just in case the outdoor dining area was close to the entrance to the restaurant. If I may, I would suggest, because we have the word that, you know, no person shall smoke in a place of employment, that we divide it off into an A and B section, except as this chapter, federal law or state law provides, no person shall smoke in a place of employment. That would be a section A. Section B would be, no person shall smoke within a 20-foot distance from an entrance or window. Or entryway. Or entryway of place of employment.
I think it's the entryway of place of employment. You know, I don't, I mean, I don't want to go to the windows, because there may be, windows may be closed, and so on and so forth, so I just want to go with the 20 feet within the entrance of a place of employment.
If you'd like, Councilman Yusefian, if you look at line 19 on page 31 of the non-strikeout version, it could be very similar, an entrance or an exit, open window, or air intake vent to a place of employment. So we could use that phrase.
I think that's a better phrase.
Yeah.
I like that better.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Yusefian. Any other comments while we're?
Was there anything else that she asked? You remember?
That was the indifferent questions.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. One other comment is, I would like to have the chamber be a part of the task force, also, I think the Board of Realtors, to be a part of the task force. And with that, I.
Mr. Najarian.
Couple of questions. What do we do with roofs? Let's say there's an apartment building, not apartment, let's say there's an office building, and there is roof access, and the owner wishes to permit smoking on the roof. Is that, how do you calculate that 20 feet then? Assuming there's no air intake in the smoking area.
Change language would be the entrance, so the access to the roof.
The access to the roof.
Hopefully the 20 feet of the access to the roof.
Okay, that would be entrance to the building. Okay, that makes sense. Today, if I wanted to operate a bar and staff it by myself alone, could I permit smoking in the bar? Is there anything that prohibits me from that, besides the OSHA regs and all the work?
It's a question whether that's a place of employment, that, as, if you're the owner.
Let's say it's not a place of employment, I'm a sole operator-owner.
I was just going to say that right now, you can have a owner-operated bar where people can legally smoke inside.
Is that true?
Yes. That's correct. Sole proprietor.
How do we define, at some point, we talk about a smoking lounge. By the way, I think that might be the next popular business that opens up. What can, what will we permit with this ordinance for someone who wants to create a clearly identified smokers lounge? Here it says no food or beverage to be served. It's just a straight-out, sit down, buy your cigars, tobacco, and smoke. Are we going to permit that, assuming there's, it's not a place of employment, there's no employee issues? Is that permitted?
It's a smoking permitted area by our ordinance. In only a tobacco shop. You couldn't convert a, you couldn't convert a restaurant.
Talking about the funny stuff I'm talking about.
Yeah. You couldn't convert a restaurant to have a smoking lounge. Right. We spend a lot of time.
Strictly.
Right.
You know, you buy your tobacco product, whether there's a nargila or a hookah, cigar stands, cigarettes, no food, no beverage, can you have beverage service?
No.
No. Just to sit there and, I've really got to smoke, and I've got to smoke inside, and let's sit down and smoke, and that type of business is permitted.
Yes.
As accepted as a smoking lounge.
I refer to you to 8.1, on page 42 of the non-strikeout version, 8.52.170, actually allows for that, and is.
That's the retail or wholesale tobacco store.
Right, and it allows within the tobacco store, an actual smoking lounge.
Do we have any specific building and safety regulations for this type of operation? In terms of venting the air and all that? And not letting it drift into your neighbor who has a nice, you know, non-smoking tea room or something?
Yes, Councilmember Najarian, you're doing a great job at grilling us on all of the different things that we've been.
Well, I don't want to grill it, but I'm just sort of thinking about.
But it's important to understand, the California Labor Code has ventilation requirements for these types of establishments.
Okay, so the Labor Code would.
Right, we didn't rewrite that into our local code.
Okay, so we adopt that as the overriding.
Plus, we do say in this that they would have to comply, you know, with our Building and Safety Code, any requirements separate and apart from the Labor Code ventilation requirement. That's on line 12 on page 42.
Okay. Can someone bring a child into a tobacco store? Is there a rule that prevents that?
It's a retail store, so I would say no.
Nothing prevents it.
Nothing prevents it.
Can we prevent that? Can we put that in that tobacco lounges shall be only for?
18 and over.
18 and over.
Yes.
Because I hate to see someone dragging their little kid into this incredibly smoky room.
I would say yes, we could.
We can do that. I'd like to, when we come, if I have support on that, I'd like to sort of nail that down and make sure that we close a loophole.
The only thing I would add is that that, it's a little bit of a new wrinkle that might fall within the germane exception to our, you introduced it last week, you want to adopt it. You can always bring it back.
Okay, whether today or some future date.
Let me just ask quickly, I think there is consensus on that issue. So I.
We could bring that back as a quick.
There's two issues. One is a tobacco store that just sells the tobacco. It's another one that is a tobacco lounge. Now, one you smoke in, one you're just selling, you could have your kids walk in, buy your stuff, and walk out.
The way I read it, one is a subset of the other. Is that, so you have to, you can only be a smoking lounge if you also to sell tobacco? You also sell tobacco. That's correct. Those would be the, that would be the only location where you could have a smokers lounge in the city, is in the retail wholesale tobacco store.
Right, in other words, you couldn't rent a building, rent a rental unit right next door to a restaurant, and just basically it's an empty box that people can stand in and smoke. It has to be incorporated into business that sells, actually sells tobacco.
But you could sell tobacco and not have people smoke.
Right. That's correct. Right.
All right. But coming back to Councilman Member Najarian's question, we can go forward with this and bring it back to amend it.
I'm okay with that. That's right.
I'm okay with that. Does this ordinance in any way affect our licensing, our retail, because we're talking about this tobacco store, and we have our licensing program?
No.
Could those inspectors be, I mean, they're allowed to enter the tobacco store and observe any violations that?
Right. As a requirement, Councilmember Najarian, members of the City Council, as a requirement of the tobacco retail licensing component of the code that you adopted last year, it authorizes, as with any license in the city, the license inventor to go in and check on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council. Yes, Councilmember Yusefian.
I'll follow up on what Mr. Najarian was saying. I think there is a business, if not maybe two, that they currently exist, that they have a tobacco lounge, and also you are allowed to have a glass of wine, or maybe a shot of cognac, or something of that nature. Now that you have said in here, you cannot have drinking with, what happens to those two or three businesses that exist in the city? They become non-conforming? Or?
Councilmember Yusefian, members of the City Council, right now, you can't smoke indoors at a place of employment. So I would have to presume that they're operating illegally, right now.
They have a sign outside. It's on brand. They'll buy it all the time.
If it is the one on South Brand, they are supposed to be doing the smoking in the outdoor patio.
That's indoors. They sell cigars, not cigarettes, cigars, and you could smoke there.
Boy, are they now happy with you.
Well, you know, I'm asking because if they're not supposed to be there, my understanding is they got a permit, they got a signed permit, they're operating legally, and so somebody gave them a permit. So you may want to check with that.
We do need to follow that up, but it's a good question. Let me go to Mr. Weaver.
Well, only have two things said. Sad this doesn't address smoking in apartments or condos. Someday I think it will be, but this is a big step forward from what this city has had. We join a growing number of cities that are moving in this direction. Just like to read one email that we received today. Dear Glendale City Council members, as a Glendale business owner and a member of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce, I urge you to pass a second-hand smoking ordinance and join with the city of Burbank in this important health initiative. Last evening at the Maricon brand, I noted that there was cigarette smoke in the air as I dined on the patio. Please pass a meaningful smoking ordinance, and I can return to the Maricon and Najaria meal in a smoke-free environment. Else I'll likely not venture out of Burbank to dine again. Thanks for your service to the city, Councilwoman Marshall Ramos. So, we've got Burbank going along with us on it, so I think we ought to move forward with this, we'll all do dispatch, make the little corrections we need to, and get it done.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Quintero.
I have some questions on the Phoenician Restaurant. How is that going to work in terms of, you know, for this particular restaurant? Their smoking section, do you have any idea?
Councilmember Quintero, member of the City Council, I was just handed their diagram. I'd like a chance to look at it if I could, answering.
Well, I'll tell you what, I have questions on that same issue, and I'll tell you, Mr. Quintero, do you have other comments to make as well? If you don't, then I'll go ahead to a few comments. I have very few, if you want to take a moment and look at that, because I also have those questions I was going to ask as well. We focused quite a bit on the smaller restaurants with outdoor seating areas or sidewalk seating. This is a restaurant that has a larger outdoor seating area. And I do want to address the question that Mr. Gantis raised on behalf of the Phoenician. In the meantime, let me just say to the public, I too would have liked a stricter ordinance that prohibited smoking in outdoor eating areas. I've said that from the beginning, that in general, to me, to live in a city where someone can be asked to stop if they sit down and they're banging symbols together while you're trying to eat outside, and there's an ordinance to cover that, but there isn't an ordinance to cover somebody who is smoking and possibly impairing your health, is a dichotomy that just doesn't make sense. However, there's also a practicality to moving any kind of public policy forward, and it has to be done slowly sometimes, and it has to be done carefully. This is certainly an imperfect ordinance, but city government is an imperfect organization, so we are not anything more than just human, an extension of the people who vote for us and place us here. And sometimes, in order to move the ball down the field, as we've been saying up here, some give and take has to happen in order to satisfy a variety of opinions on a given issue. That's what we've done here. So we've crafted an ordinance that I think will help. It'll be, we won't be the point city in the state of California, but it's certainly a very forward-looking ordinance from the anti-smoking or no-smoking point of view. I'd like to thank the public for coming down these many nights to give input, for emailing, sending letters, picking up the phone and calling, stopping, I'm sure, I know myself, probably my colleagues as well, stopping all of us on the street to give us their input. The business owners in this city who have taken the time to come down to contact us and give constructive input to help us and our city staff craft this ordinance. I'd like to thank the Glendale Chamber of Commerce and the Glendale Association of Realtors for making their points of view known to us, and not just in a way that says, do this or else, but here are our views, and here's constructive ways that we can help. We heard it tonight with the President of the Glendale Chamber coming forward and saying, we'd like to be a part of the public outreach. Which, by the way, I'd like to be on the record for joining Councilmember Yusefian in also suggesting that that would be a very good thing, Mr. Engel, to include the chamber and also the Association of Realtors, should they wish to be involved. The city staff, as you can see, has had a monumental task to craft this. I think in certain ways, it would have been easier for them if we had created an ordinance that said just no outdoor smoking, no smoking in it, you know, it would have been, I think, far easier than to craft an ordinance in and out of all the loops and mazes we've created in trying to put together a reasonable compromise. And then, in addition, I'd like to thank my colleagues on the City Council. We've come a long way from the first evening that we were discussing this. You know, there's, we all have our own views as to how this should happen and if it can happen, yet I think we've got something that, one way or the other, we all believe will be a step forward in a constructive way. So I thank my colleagues on the council as well. Having said all of that, and sounding like someone who just accepted an award, let me go back to Mr. Engel. Did I stretch long enough for you, Mr. Engel?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Draymond. Members of the City Council, the Phoenician, if you're looking at the diagram, and I realize I have one of yours in front of me. And I also want to refer back to the requirements that are in 8.52.120 of the proposed ordinance on page 34 and 35 of the non-strikeout version. If you were looking at those requirements and applying them to the diagram that Mr. Gantis provided, I count that by their table count, they would end up with the larger tables, approximately four of those, which would be eligible. When you have the smaller tables, which seem to be either two-person or four-person, they would end up with two of those at the 25 percent threshold, which. would end up with two of those at the 25% threshold, which is in the current ordinance. They meet most of the other requirements for separation, which would include a half or knee wall. And if you notice at the bottom of the outdoor tables there, you'll see a wall diagram that's They've got planters or containers that are already out there. So if you were to look at some of this, they would end up with approximately four of the larger tables, 40 seats. Mr. Gantis has indicated to Mr. Grant that the chair counts at the tables are not exactly accurate on the diagram. They said they seated 160. There's not 160.
Chairs.
Chairs on the diagram.
Mr. Yusefian.
My understanding is the 25% of the square footage, correct?
25% of the seating capacity on?
Right.
On line 13 of page 35, 25% of the seating capacity.
Okay, so if there's 22 big tables in here, 25% of that will be probably about five.
Right.
And whatever the small ones are, it'll be a quarter of that.
Right.
That's all. And all they have to do is just segregate that and make sure that there's a tenth of separation between, that's all.
That's correct, Mr. Yusefian. When we looked at the ordinance, quite honestly, Mayor Draymond, members of the City Council, there were a couple of the larger restaurants that we felt the 25%, they would be able to meet that fairly handily, whether or not they agreed with the 25%. They were able to meet that and the Phoenisha restaurant was one. And was the other one. By having, both of them having large outdoor areas would be able to accommodate a larger number of smokers in other restaurants. And we realized, looking at the very small restaurants, the medium-sized restaurants, the large ones, those were the two, and this was one of them. They would get a substantial chunk of their outside capacity, 40 smoking seats, this particular case.
Okay, and is seating?
More than 160. You've got to count the ones on Central Avenue as well. In the diagram, it shows 36 seats.
Mr. Gantis, if you'd like to speak, you need to.
It's not relevant. I got your.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gantis. Yes, Mr.?
We start down the street, allowing an exception to one. Like anything else we do here, we're going to have others in, starting to want exceptions because of their conditions.
Mr. Weaver, I'm not trying to be disagreeable, but I'm not hearing anybody ask for that.
Oh, no, but I'm listening where it's going.
Oh, okay.
I think it was an issue of clarification.
Yeah, I mean.
That's what it is.
Part of it was.
Gantis was asking, "How would you do this?" And I think that's what.
The other thing is clarification on our part as well, because there's a question of was it 25% of the square footage, or the tables, or the number of seats? And that was another clarification that was.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that we do the 25% of the square footage. That would be the easiest way to calculate. It's easier for staff to go out there and figure out, here's the square footage, here's the 25%. That's it. Instead of trying to figure out how many tables, how many seats, how much apart they have to be, and so on and so forth, it's going to make it difficult for staff to go out there. I'm not going to be the one who's going to enforce it.
Let's ask staff.
Staff enforcement issue.
Mayor Draymond, members of the City Council, Councilmember Yusefian, I'm going to let Mr. Kozas, who's the analyst, who's actually been analyzing and talking me through some of this, tell you what would work and what might not work as well. Steve?
Thank you, Sam. Mayor Draymond and members of the City Council, from an enforcement perspective, when we look at where do we measure from, and looking at outdoor seating areas on sidewalks, where would we measure from? Is it, are we measuring from the wall or measuring from the street? Instead, it's easier to count the chairs and/or the tables that are out there at the current time of the inspection. So, from an enforcement perspective, putting ourselves in the inspector's shoes as they're trying to enforce this, they look at the current position of tables and chairs for their enforcement action.
Personally, Councilmember Yusefian, I see what you're saying, but I think in terms of enforcement, that is, it is far easier to just count seats than to go and try to piss off.
Whatever is easier for enforcement, that's fine.
It's new territory, so, I know, it's, all right. Other questions or comments? Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Are we squared away on the language with regard to the, Mr. City Attorney, with regard to 20 feet and entrances?
Right. Let me do this, Mr. Mayor, if I may. I think what I would do is read an amendment to Section 8.52.120 and then ask Mr. Grant, I think he's got some comments to 8.52. And they have to be read into the record so that the ordinance will take effect. Let me read. What we're suggesting is on Section 8.52.120, that subsection A be revised to read, even though Sections 8.52.050 and 8.52.070 of this chapter prohibit smoking in an outdoor dining area, an owner, manager, or person in charge or control of an outdoor dining area may designate portion of the premises adjoining outdoor area as a smoking permitted area when the designated smoking permitted area meets all the requirements listed in subsection B of this section. So that's that section that, I think that's the direction you wanted to go on that. Section 8.52.050, smoking prohibited in places of employment, it would read as follows. Except as this chapter, federal law, or state law provides, no person shall smoke in, colon, A, excuse me, shall smoke, colon, A, in a place of employment, period. B, within a 20-foot distance from an entrance or exit, comma, open window, comma, or air intake vent to a place of employment, period. So those are the two amendments to make it clear that it's within 20 feet of an entrance as opposed to 20 feet of a place of employment. And I think the other, those are the only two changes that council wanted.
Could we make the "in," inside?
Yes.
Side.
Side rather than "in."
Because "in" place of employment, what if it's a yard?
By definition, we have. Well, it would include that, so actually you might be better off with saying "in."
Okay, so that's fine. That's fine. Yeah, I'm just trying to figure this out myself. Oh, it's okay.
Okay. All right, and then, if there are no other comments? None? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce the ordinance at 7, I mean, I'd like to move the ordinance at 781.
We're well past that.
Amended.
With modifications.
Modifications, all right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Buchanan, if you would, please.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes.
I'd like to move 782 now.
The modification that it's a non-smoking ambassador. I'll second that.
Motion and a second.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes.
I'd like to move 783 with the one modification. Want to read it in?
Sure, if you'd like, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Weaver. This was just with reference to the enforcement policy. It would say, well, currently says a person or city representative verbally warned or the person who is smoking to stop, etc. It should read a person or city representative listed in Glendale Municipal Code Section 8.52.200B has formally warned or ordered the person. Just that clarifies that it's a city, authorized city representative to make that warning.
Thank you. And?
That's my motion.
We have a motion and?
Wait a second.
We have a second?
No, we don't.
We have a question, however.
How do you deal with apartments if you are expecting a city employee to make those notices? I thought we were going to give some authority to the apartment manager so they could go to their tenants and say, "Hey, don't smoke here. It's not designated." Or is it covered?
Councilmember Yusefian, I didn't follow the question.
The way the modification was on, motion on 783, basically eliminated the person, which said anyone can go and say to someone, "Stop smoking," to making that individual being a city employee. So, my question was, if you have a tenant in an apartment building who is smoking in the area that is restricted, does the manager have an authority to go there? Or now that this section has been changed, that manager has to get on the phone, call somebody from the city to show up over there and tell the person?
Mayor Draymond, members of the City Council, Councilmember Yusefian, it would be a product of the terms of tenancy at this point, because what the apartments are going to have, as we work through this through the next year and probably a little longer than that, areas where smoking is permitted, those limited designations, and those areas where smoking is prohibited. And as we work with the owners, it becomes a violation of the terms of the tenancy if they're doing that. And if you refer to 8.50.190, Mike has helped me out with this, this provides the authority of property owners to actually address those on their own property.
Okay, so they can do that?
Yes.
On their own, so, okay.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor that is thus far not seconded.
Really, I mean, let's be clear about that. 0.190 gives the authority to that list of people A through I to designate and post non-smoking areas. But here's the problem, you're living in an apartment building and someone's smoking in the laundry room, and you go and tell your manager and say, "Look, this guy's smoking. He's not supposed to smoke." The enforcement is in 0.200, and it doesn't give the boarding house manager the authority to do the enforcement. So maybe we need to?
Well, that's because it was covered on the other.
One is that, I think Mr. Engel's reference to being subject of the tenancy is that if the landlord puts this in the lease, then he or she has the authority under the lease to enforce on the lease. If they want to actually, if they want, somebody wants the city to actually enforce the ordinance, then it would be somebody from the landlord or the property manager who would need to contact the city and say, "This person has ceased, has not stopped smoking after repeated warnings." And then it would be incumbent upon one of the city officials listed in the ordinance to make the warning to that particular smoker. Is that how it would work?
These are the things, quite honestly, councilmembers, Mayor Draymond.
It's tricky, I got to tell you something.
That are things that we're going to have to work through, which is why we said it's going to take a year to work through this. There are going to be, working with apartment owners, and I've got to tell you, and working through this, I've had apartment owners that said to us, "This is great you're doing this because we have wanted the backing of the city to make our buildings smoke free." I've had people on the other side that said, "It's going to be difficult for us because we have tenants that smoke." This is why we gave ourselves the year in that outreach strategy and the enforcement strategy to work through these exact issues. Certainly, the apartment manager or owner always has the ability to enforce the terms of their tenancy. And once they designate areas on the apartment, on the units, which they're required to do, where smoking is prohibited and smoking is permitted, then they have the authority to do that, which I think is the basis of your question.
Right.
Relative to the grounds of tenancy. Now, the fallout for that is, for the tenant that doesn't, that breaches the grounds of their tenancy, they're subject to eviction. We corrected that with, or we allowed?
Cause eviction.
For the just cause for eviction.
Right.
So they become, let me finish here, they become the actual enforcement authority on apartments.
That's a civil matter, though.
Right.
It's not, we need to come back to this. I mean, I don't want to derail this train at this point, but please, let's come back.
Okay.
I, yeah, I'm a landlord. I don't want to evict the guy. I just want him to get one $50 ticket and learn that he can't do it anymore and bring him in line, stay in the unit, et cetera. But let's come back with that. Let's not.
Bring that back with the issue that you raised.
Right, about the tobacco retail store.
Retail issue.
Under 18.
Mr. Yusefian.
So, could we then take 783 off until staff works it out?
Well, I don't know. I think what Mr. Engel is suggesting is to approve the implementation strategy and then work those issues out while they're implementing the strategy.
And they'll come back with a modification?
Right. If modifications need to be made, because after the time of implementing it or starting the process of working with the business owners, it's determined that some aspects of the ordinance are unworkable, that could be brought back.
Yeah. And that's one of the reasons I am more comfortable with the original language, because I think it's more encompassing than the modified language, which narrows it down to city staff. And I like to give the staff the most latitude and then let them kind of figure it out where it's going to be, instead of trying to make it city staff only and then later on come back and try to increase it.
Mr. Garcia.
I would just add to that, that the language in the policy was really intended to mirror the language in the code. So I was, we were just trying to provide clarification to make it consistent.
All right.
So, where are we, 783?
We're at, yeah.
Motion and no second.
We have a motion and no second. We have a second.
Is there any further?
His is. For modified version. His is modified.
Reflecting the.
Yeah, just to modify the language, as to make it consistent with the language of the code.
With the ordinance, right.
Consistent with ordinance.
We're going to work out. We're going to have to massage it.
We have a feeling in the next year. All right, we have a motion and a second, 783.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sam.
Go home.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good luck, good luck for the six months we're going to spend trying to work this out.
Okay. All right. Ms. Buchanan, can you lead us on to the next item?
At item 8A, city attorney regarding policy regarding placing matters on the agenda. At 8A1 is a motion providing direction to staff.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this?
Before you start, I'm going home. I'll watch it on TV.
You'll watch the rerun, sir?
Yes.
Well, we're better looking on TV anyway, Councilmember Quintero, so.
Do we want all five here for this next discussion?
I?
I don't.
I don't know.
Because it involves the five of us.
Have any opinion, parting words of wisdom, Mr. Quintero?
The majority goes.
Oh, well, my case.
And note and file. All right. All right, so if there is a problem, Mr. Weaver, we will just reconvene next week at Councilmember Quintero's home.
I'll bring the cigars.
Yes, there you go. Okay, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item was requested by the council to give a summary of the council's policy of placing matters on the agenda in light of some recent issues regarding how certain matters were brought forth before the council. The general, first of all, I should say that the council does not have a formal written policy for placing matters on the agenda. Our practice has been, through custom and tradition, to allow individual councilmembers to place the matters on, request that matters be placed on the agenda, and they're subsequently placed on the agenda. Both the Brown Act and the rules of parliamentary procedure do allow the council to make a decision right then and there when a request is made, to take a vote up or down on whether that matter should be placed on the agenda. And so that's what has occurred, did occur recently at a council meeting. In addition, we do allow, the council has a policy of allowing for reconsideration of items previously approved by the council. Mr. Howard had previously opined that in order for a matter to be brought back after it had been previously acted on at a prior council meeting, that that matter should be requested by a council member who voted on the prevailing side of that particular issue. The council does not have a policy limiting when matters can be brought back. The council does not have a policy limiting when matters can be brought back. For example, some jurisdictions have policies limiting a matter to not, not come back unless it's brought back within fourteen days. Other jurisdictions have a policy not allowing something to be brought back until at least six months at last. The only policy we have with respect to that issue is on appeals, formal appeals brought under the Uniform Appeal Procedure. Those matters cannot be brought back within six months unless they've been revised. So before you is, we've offered some suggestions, or not suggestion, just options, I should say, regarding the policy, if the council could basically formalize the current policy was, which is to allow council member, individual council members to make a request. The policy can also include a requirement that, or a provision to allow the mayor to seek consensus on whether that matter should be brought back to subsequent meeting. Other options are to adopt a policy similar to what Burbank has done, which is what they call a one-step, two-step. And that's, that, I would, I would note that that policy was instituted because there was a concern about the expenditure of staff time and resources on matters that the, the full council didn't really want to be spent. So there, there are a range of options here. I would tell you that in our limited research of looking at what other jurisdictions do, some, some, one council has a policy that any council member can place a matter on the agenda, period, no exceptions. And to the other extreme of a council that has a agenda subcommittee decides which, which items actually get to the council full agenda. So from, those are the two extremes of what you can do. Our only suggestion is that you form whatever policy you want, that you do formalize that policy in a written document.
Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I would just add that to the tradition and practice of allowing a council member to request a matter placed on the agenda, there have been numerous occasions in the time that I've been here and that policy's been exercised, those times when due to the, the nature of the item, whether it be controversial or possibly something that had been discussed sometime recently, maybe months or so, where either at the manager's request or at times the mayor's request, rather than automatically bring the matter back, the mayor, or at the manager's request, the mayor has attempted to see if indeed the council consensus is to bring the matter back on the agenda. So there have been exceptions to the practice and tradition of, of at one council member's request, placing a matter on the agenda. Has occurred on numerous occasions, but it's, it's the exception, certainly not the rule.
Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, I remember those, we've gone through periods where all of us have every week given you, given staff, I'd like a report on this, I'd like a report on this, I want this agendized, I want that agendized. Now, you have an extreme amount of work to do as it is, assignments, whatever. Every time that's a council, one council member decides they want something, it's adding to your workload. Then you've got to figure out the priorities and generally what council asks for go more to the top of the list. I personally feel that the mayor should look and see if there's a consensus on the council to take up that, that item. The mayor's done it recently with rent control. In this case, he asked all five, do you want to take on rent control again? And we said, no. I personally think I'd be codified that the mayor, when people, when none of us want anything agendized, that the mayor asks, is there a consensus for staff to do that? I can't see the one, two-step and bringing it back for discussion. Now, the council meetings get longer as we debate on whether we ought to agendize or have staff go look at it. So I'm always concerned with the amount of work it's throwing onto the staff that is unprogrammed. I hit that when I worked for the federal government many times, where the colonel or somebody come down and want something taken up. And we would say, doesn't the colonel know what we're doing now? What's the priority? We just set this aside now and do this because he wants it now? We can't make the other deadlines. So when council sits and says, I want this agendized, I want this, when can you bring it back? Can you have it in two weeks, a month? We're doing that in a total vacuum, which is unfair to all the city staff, in my opinion. So asking consensus, asking the city manager if it's doable, what is gonna suffer? If we dump it on planning, for instance, Hassan has a whole workload of stuff. And if we say, we'd like to agendize a discussion of this and that, Hassan, how can you, how can you get it out? You've got to go back and look at everything you've got, maybe slipping things that we previously said were important to bring this one new item back. It's got to be more communication. First, is there a consensus from the council that we want it? And then asking the city manager, okay, what's gonna give in the workload that we have now? What's gonna give? You can't do everything first priority. And I've seen that for twelve years. I, I think it's wrong. I'd like to see that part codified.
Okay, um, let me see what, what else. Mr. Najarian, Mr. Yusefian? Who would like to go?
If you wanted this to put on the agenda, so...
The reason I, I asked for this to be put on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, is because for as long as I remember with previous councils, before even I was on it, the, the practice has been that a council member asks for an item to be put on the agenda, there's a list that is kept by the city manager, that item is listed with a date, and we used to get a running list that says, you know, such and such person asked for it at that time, and then, now, some of them would take three years to get to, but some of them got there within two weeks because they were important. But nevertheless, everyone had an opportunity to do this on issues and it would come back. My issue with having a consensus on an item, to take an item, it could be abused to an extent by asking a very controversial issue to be put on the agenda and three people say, no, and they have some of their people show up at the dais saying, uh-huh, three people are against this particular thing, or they are for this. Give you an example, I think we should pass an ordinance that it's illegal to beat up your wife. And three people say, no, we don't want to discuss that. It's not that they think it should be legal, it's just that it's already illegal, so you don't need to do that. But one person who wants to be a rebel rouser can bring that up, and three council members will say, no, we don't want to spend our time. And another person who will show up to the council meetings every time and will say, well, the council did not want to even take up the issue of beating your wife. These three people are for beating their wives. It's a crude example, but nevertheless, I've seen that happen in some other municipalities. So that's why I kind of worry about this concept of, you know, what we're going to do on this. I thought, though, if there is consensus that at least there's one or two, so this way we do not send a message of majority of three, I, I think that would be a good way of going. So this way, then we can't be accused of building a consensus or some sort of other. I do not like the one C twosies, you know, two-step thing, because I think you discuss it twice. I, I think if the, the mayor who's running the meeting, he basically turns around and says, is there somebody else who's interested in this item besides Mr. Yusefian? And if there's another take, then fine. The timing will be determined by the city manager and the mayor somewhere down the line. And that's, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Councilmember Yusefian, Councilmember Najarian.
Um, I mean, there's different types of issues involved here. One is frivolous issues that will take up a lot of staff time. I don't think we want to do that. You know, I want a report, an agenda item on the number of hubcaps that fly off cars due to speed humps, and I demand a audit and a tally of every speed hump in the city, that's something that's clearly a waste of time. Just because one councilman wants that, I don't think the rest of the council should There are other items, though, that don't rely, that don't take a lot of staff time, things that, that we want to talk about. And when we, when one or two council members begin to talk about it in a little bit of depth, we get the look from the city attorney saying, well, you're violating the Brown Act, this has to be agendized. And that's, I think that was kind of the situation we've run into in the past. Two wanted to talk about it, we couldn't talk about it because it wasn't agendized, but...
The third one jumps in and the city attorney has a heart attack.
Right. So I, I guess the, I guess the two, consensus of two may be a good rule to, rule to take that would cover both of those type of issues. One that, that does take some staff time and the other that, that wouldn't take any staff time, it's just something that they want to get out and, and air and, and discuss. Hoping that there's two, you know, two heads who believe that there is a legitimate purpose in discussing an issue, whether it involves staff time or not, would make it so that there is some valid purpose in doing it. Just one council member might want to plant a bomb. You know, if you just leave it up to one person, let's talk about agendize abortion rights the week before the election, you know? That could certainly be inflammatory and not have much validity. But if you have two, I mean, it can be abused by two as well. I don't want to say just because two people agree to it that there's completely abuse-free, but I think it limits the, the amount of abuse that can be and mischief and mayhem and chaos that, that a totally bogus and inflammatory agenda item could, could cause. So I, I think maybe the two is a, is a good compromise between all these different types of proposals, the one-step, two-step. I don't like that. I think that will take more staff time. The committee is another waste of time. But then one person requesting an agenda item, I think, is giving too much authority to one person. So maybe the two-person consensus is, is a way to go on.
And Mr. City Manager.
For what it's worth, from a practical standpoint, using your example of the hubcaps, in all likelihood, what we would do, whether it was one council member who requested it or two, or there was a complete consensus on the council to bring the matter back, we would probably assess how much work in that case it's really going to take. And then we come back with a report to you that would say, you asked for this, this is what it's going to entail. Do you really want this? Will you allocate the money? Do you want us to set something else aside to do it? In all of these cases, we will use discretion, depending on what's been asked for, to maybe come back in one or two additional steps to really ferret out what it is you want and did you completely understand that it was gonna take this much effort or have this level of complexity. I like the thought of having at least two, because then you do get some sense whether there is at least a modicum of interest on the council, of having us go put at least something together. You've noticed that we use a great deal, we didn't always, but we did begin to use a number of years ago when the council requests began to be more numerous, to come back to you, before we would craft an ordinance, for example, and say, well, here are, here are the issues embodied in this topic. Now, are you sure in looking at what information we've gathered as you assess it? Now, do you want us to go away and prepare an ordinance? We had several situations where, at the request of a number of council members, there'd be a consensus, we would go craft an ordinance and spend a lot of time, research, ordinance, and our first step back would be with the whole thing. And then we'd find out, nah, there's really no interest. Well, we did a whole lot of work. So we've, we've learned that if something's rather complex, if it's controversial, if it's going to take a lot of work, we'll come back in a step or two to really ferret out if you want us to go all the way down the road or you were just interested in getting some background information. Although, having said that, I, I do like the thought of having at least a couple of council members have some interest in something before we go off and even begin to work on, on an item.
Okay, well, let me make a couple of comments, too. As someone who is a li, I think a little more, comes to this with a little fresher eyes, and just from the sense of not having been here quite so long. First of all, some of the things we're talking about, some of the recent topics, aggressive solicitation, that's on the agenda, that's coming back, that hasn't gone away, it's been there the whole time, it's just, it's just you try to prioritize the items. The ethics ordinance, an ethics ordinance, Mr. Najarian asked about, and that is coming back. The landscaping, San Fernando Road landscaping, well, that not only has been coming back, but we were dealing with that tonight, as an example. Rent mediation, that was asked for by Councilmember Najarian, and that is coming back. I asked today, I was talking to the city manager today at some point in the afternoon because I was curious, I know of my practices, but I don't know what other mayors have done. And I was, you know, in a roundabout way, sort of trying to find a polite way to say in his experience of other mayors asked to bury items. And the answer was no, that he's not experienced that here. And, and I didn't think so, but I wanted to sort of kind of get the answer to that. And I don't do that either. I've been on the upside and the downside of asking for things to be agendized. For example, for the first year that I was on the council, we were talking about condo conversions. Councilmember Yusefian and I were on the, sort of the losing end of that. We wanted to reopen the issue again, and the majority of the rest of our colleagues didn't want to go there. They had been there, they had covered it and didn't feel that, you know, we wanted to take a, a whole other new pursuit or attack so soon on that topic. Another issue that I've noticed is sometimes we will ask for reports for things that really we can go privately, not privately, but individually to a department head, I can go to Mr. Zern and ask, can you give me the information you have on curb cuts or the rate of sidewalk replacement or, you know, potholes or any variety of things without having to agendize it and bring it back? It's an informational item that we can, you know, it's, it's not something that there really needs to be, the entire involvement of staff beyond just getting the information. And then we can make a decision as there's some aspect of that we want to place on the The, I'll give you another example. First year I was here, I asked that we agendize the issue of community gardens and district signs. Well, the district signs finally came back, and I think that was shortly after, after April. In other words, those two things didn't come back on the agenda, the, the year in which I asked for them to be agendized. It wasn't because they were buried, but these were not high priority issues that, you know, were ranking up there with design review board reform and how we constitute our boards and commissions and all of those other things that we were working on last year. So it wasn't that Ben Mayor Najarian was burying them, it's just there is a, a priority and there's only so much you can move along in the course of a year. The budget, all of those things were, were far more important and so on. So my, this is my very long-winded way of saying that it's not to me so much that I want to see at least two people say, I would like to see this, it's that, I would say that if there's an issue that council member is raising, unless there's, unless there's objection, in other words, unless there's a, a consensus of objection almost, why not put it on the, on the, on the agenda? I mean, the, the point is, we have a very good sense of one another and how we think generally and how we operate. We, you know, we also know when something is there to be controversial, when it's there to really get at the heart of something, or if it's gonna be controversial, or if it's some ground that's been covered before or what have you. I mean, generally speaking, whatever is asked to go on the agenda gets on the agenda. It's when there is a uniformity of opposition to putting it on the agenda that it doesn't end up there. And, and in a sense, I believe that's how it should be, because what is the point if you have a majority of council members who don't want to deal with the topic? I mean, that is, that's part of what, the sense of what you have in here, Mr. City Attorney, as to the rationale for, for the policy being, existing policy being that we would ask for a consensus or that the mayor may ask for a consensus, as to whether they want to bring something forward. It's when the, the chair has the sense that this is not something that the majority of his colleagues want to bring forward, so he'll ask. And I think I've done that a couple of times. By the way, even the topic we're talking about, this is on the agenda because Councilmember Yusefian asked for it and I agreed with him, even though the very issue that brought it up was something we disagreed about. But we agree on the, on the point that we needed some clarification on it to move forward. I'm not so sure that, that... I'm not so sure that, that this is something we need to change, I'm not hearing from staff that they're buried in, 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 Mr. Hagani, you were, you were pointed out, not to put you on the spot, but as an example, is your sense that you are being buried by request from the council, you know, for agenda items to be placed on, is it something manageable, or shall we stop?
It is manageable, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that comes with telling, "Don't ask the question, you don't know the answer."
Well, sometimes, yeah, it's fun to ask the question, you don't know the answer to, Mr. Sarver.
On that, the number of requests we get ebb and flow. There was a meeting a few weeks ago, I think I counted sixteen items requested, now, not to be placed on an agenda, they were various nascently what we call follow-up items to a meeting.
Information.
Infor, well, and, and what, what we'll do on a Wednesday morning, when all of the executives meet, as many times, we'll, we'll run through those lists of follow-up items, and invariably, somebody will ask, now, is this just a, just an item of information? And even that'll have different levels, can I just send you an email and you'll distribute it to the council? Do you want this, something written in your weekly report? Or, the other end, does this have to come back as an agenda item? And many times, when it's not perfectly clear, we'll sit there and say, "Well, you know what, send me an informational report, we'll ship it out, if one of the council members wants it on the agenda, they'll raise it." We deal with that all the time, and then, as you point out, Mr. Mayor, so much of this is timing and prioritization. It is not uncommon, as we sit there and do our agenda, future agendas, which happens every Monday, we reach out six, eight, ten weeks, looking at what's coming up, there'll be something there that has been holding for a long time, and frankly, it's ready to go, and it's on an agenda, but we realize, oh, we got a planning commission appeal, or the smoking ordinance has gotten in the way, and we got a hearing on the smoking ordinance, so this item that frankly is just kind of extra, it'll keep getting kicked another week, and another week, and another week, because things that are imminently important come up on an agenda, and we can't, we know we won't have time to do them both at the same time. That happens all the time as well, so, we have a very long list that sits out there, we try and get them cleaned up by giving you as many items we can that are sort of informational, and don't have to go on an agenda, unless you really want it on an agenda, the rest that go on the agenda, working with the mayor, and it is very valuable to have the ability to utilize the mayor as a sounding board on timing issues. And that was done because, from a city manager's standpoint, frankly, to be in a position where you're making a decision about, gee, what is, what should be the timing of this, it is, it is really very useful, and has been since this policy was implemented about, I think, seven or eight years ago.
Six.
I think it's been longer than that, but...
I was there in 2000.
I wasn't.
Anyway, it's been, it's been very useful to have, to have the mayor as a sounding board, as we try and sort out issues of timing. And again, in my, in my experience, it has not been abused by the mayor.
My view also is that, you know, something doesn't get on the agenda, it is very easy for one of the rest of us, or two, to say, "This is something of importance to us," where, well, we do this all the time, during staff and, staff and council comments, where is this item? You know, we haven't seen it, and sometimes, we get a, frankly, gentlemen, we get a blank stare back. Councilmember Najarian asked about the ethics ordinance, the rest of us went, "What? Are you talking about the code of conduct?" Said, "No." We all looked at each other and said, "Don't really remember that," but, so, now it's on the agenda.
So frankly, the staff did, too. We went back that Wednesday, the next Wednesday.
When I was saying, "Gentlemen," I was referring to the staff.
Next Wednesday, we asked ourselves, "I don't remember having that request."
Right, but bottom line is, we have the ability to come back and say, "Where is this? We want it on there," even if the mayor doesn't want it on there, so. So while we're at this point, if I may, I neglected to ask earlier, during city council staff comments, about the agenda, when is the ethics ordinance coming back?
We're still working on it, Mr. Mayor. We don't have a date, the council dates it.
Right, but you are, you are working on it to bring it back.
And here's, and here's what we'll do, we, we will try very hard to pin down a date and get it in your packet of future agendas, and you notice your future agendas kind of have two levels of, of projections. One is where we're actually, we actually have the meeting in a box, and things are listed by department, then there's just a whole series of dates. We don't generally get out to just the dates, we're really working on the next six weeks. But with something like this, so that it doesn't fall off the, off the table, and we forget about it, often I'll say, "Get me a target date, even if it's not the one you actually know you can make, let's get it on the list and a date, and then at least, we know we're working towards something, and it won't, won't fall off the table and be forgotten about." Because there are lots of things, and they do get lost in the shovel frankly, at times.
It also may be helpful for the public, council members are aware of this, staff is aware of it, but I'm not sure the public is, that aside from the top of the meeting, where usually our assistant city manager, Mr. McFall, reads the agenda preview for meetings that are upcoming, we receive usually on Tuesday, when we, actually, when we go to closed session, we usually receive a, a, before we start our closed session, there's waiting for us usually an upcoming, list of upcoming agenda items, and the, the dates where they are either going to come, or tentatively scheduled, so.
And Mr. Mayor, what you don't see is, that changes probably three or four times in the course of the week, by the time we actually put out an agenda. We'll do the predictions, the, the long-range forecasting on air every Monday, then that is generally given to you on Tuesdays, and then Wednesdays, we go through it again, and then if there's any changes, it happened on Thursday before the packets go out, they may change again, so, that tentative agenda session will, will change, sometimes two or three times a week.
The last comment I have on that, and then that's in my comments, is that in terms of council members asking for some, something that is just outrageous, or for a reaction, or to the example that was given of, you know, trying to say, you know, "Do you still beat your wife?" kind of thing, I, I admit, I've only been here a little under a year and a half, but I haven't heard those kind of things come forward. Now, before that, I was a pretty keen observer of the city council, and I wasn't really hearing it then either. Now, occasionally at other city councils, but I haven't heard it here, so I'm not really hearing that happen where, where, you know, it, basically, a council member or a mayor is just setting up his colleagues for something that is politically damaging, so, in any case, I, I'm pretty much, I think we're okay where we are, we have the flexibility to, for a council member or council members to say, "Hey, Mr. Mayor, I disagree, we'd like to have this on the agenda." That happens now. This discussion is part of that, I mean, as an example of that, Mr. Usafian.
And Mr. Mayor, I, I think while we're here, for the benefit of the future council members who are new, they come to the city council, and they don't know what the rules and regulations and the policies are, I think we need to adopt some type of a policy, so this way, in future, while we're not here anymore, or new people come in, they know what the procedures are. What does it take to put the item on the agenda? Here, it's written down in here, because till now, to be honest with you, nothing had been written down. It was just an understanding that we've always had, and one council told the next council, and so on, and so on, and so on. So it, it wasn't really written down anywhere, that's why, when that incident happened that day, I was kind of surprised, and so were a lot of other previous council members in the city council, because they were all under assumption, and maybe we should not assume, because you know what that word means, but we all assumed that that was a written policy, and it turned out, it wasn't. So that's why, if this is where the direction we're going to go, whether it's a one-man, or it's a two-man, whatever it may be, in my opinion, we should have some kind of a poli, written policy and adopt it, so this way, we have a written policy and get that done, so, you know, the mayor has jurisdiction, runs the meetings, and this is how it's going to happen.
Well, that, that's okay, with me, my twelve years here, I've seen the, the unofficial policies or directions, and the councils change every year. You know, when I got elected in ninety-seven, I walked in the closed door, I sat down in a chair, and I got yelled at. "That's not the chair you sit in, you sit in that chair over there." I says, "Oh, I didn't know the, the understanding, what chair I sat in, and then, well, now you're mayor, now you sit in that chair." A lot of little things that councils do over time, even to, putting signs down there, "Mayor's parking only, the council can park in the other." When I'd get here at seven in the morning, I'd park in the first stall, and the new mayor came in, "Oh, no, no, that should be mine, now it says, 'Mayor's parking only.'" So, all these little things...
It wasn't me.
No, no, it wasn't you. It's little things that happen over time, and if we codify at least this one, that clears up one little part of irritants that can happen.
Well, I certainly agree that that, that this, that we should, we could and should codify it, I'm just suggesting that what that is, is a different issue. In other words, that we put it in writing is one issue, and I do agree with that, what we put in writing is a different issue, and I'm, and I'm not sure we're hearing a consensus yet.
Should we have staff come back?
So, why don't... So we can have staff come back, if it is the desire of the council to, to codify this, and I am, that I am hearing a consensus of, just what would be in that, I'm not exactly clear that I'm hearing a, a...
Mr. Mayor, I'm not either, I've heard it slightly differently.
Well, good, I'm glad I'm not hearing it differently than you.
They can bring offense, Mr. Mayor. City Manager wants to speak.
Mr. City Manager.
I was going to suggest, we, we, you mentioned codify, which would imply putting municipal code, this would be the sort of thing you could do by resolution.
Absolutely.
Frankly, and what I was going to suggest is, why don't, why don't we just go ahead and craft something that would be based on continuing the existing practice and tradition, and insert in there, whether it's one or two, my preference frankly would be two council members, but again, leaving discretion for the mayor, in those cases where he wants to get a stronger consensus, we'll craft, I don't think this is a difficult item to write up, I really don't.
Then we can pick it apart, if we want to.
I would agree with that, if my colleagues...
It wasn't difficult.
All right, and then also, Councilmember Quintero can't get off the hook either.
That's right.
So, all right.
Sitting home going, "Shocks."
Do you look at a motion to direct our office to come back with a, a written policy and place the matter on the agenda, consistent with the current practice?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, a second.
We have a second. All right, Ms. Buchanan.
Councilmembers Najarian, Quintero, Weaver, Usafian, Mayor Drayman.
Yes, all right, thank you. Yes, we're at oral communications, and the other bit of housekeeping that I forgot, that I think that would be under new business.
All right, just wanted you to know.
Yeah.
I got up late.
Okay, under the idea, excuse me, one other thing I forgot to ask about, other than the ethics ordinance, if we could bring us back, this council back at the next meeting, an answer to that question, just an estimated time. There is also an inform...
Also, no.
There is also an informational item that was asked, that was about an update on the Andinas Drive. So if we could, I'm sorry about that, gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, do you want to report on that, or do you want the matter on the agenda?
It's just an informational...
Okay, we have that already.
An update.
We have it already.
And then, our next item, please, Ms. Buchanan.
At item six, oral communications, discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation or report.
Okay, thank you very much. Our first speaker is Dottie Yelsick, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Dottie Yelsick, resident of Glendale. I had the opportunity, Mayor Drayman, to hear your talk with Al Rantel last night on KABC radio, and I didn't quite catch what you said, did you, and I know the conversation revolved around the economics of a municipality, did you say that the residents of Glendale had the most accessible or available representation, do you recall making that statement?
No, that's close to what I said, but not what I said.
Okay, well, anyway, Al Rantel was very impressed with that, and as a matter of fact, he suggested that you should run for governor. Well, I want to tell you, this is the third time I've brought this matter to the council, and I'm not sure what you expect me to do next. It revolved the incident that happened in Verdugo Park on September twenty-first at seven, approximately seven fifteen in the morning, when someone who was working for an event that was being held there, approached us in a group of people that I was getting ready to jog with, he was not in uniform, and he was armed. Now, at, at the council meeting on the twenty-third, I asked you who this individual was, and what authority he had to ask us to move our vehicles from the park. So far, nothing has been, nothing has been clarified on that at all. So my question is, I'm going to keep coming here until I get an answer, because many other users have, have activities in that park, and we can't be expected to know what to expect. I mean, who is this person that, that would show up being armed anyway? I mean, was he part of the event? And he portrayed himself as being in support of the Glendale police. Now, that is not right, and I believe, if I understood correctly, city attorney last, Scott Howard said at last Tuesday's meeting, city council meeting, that it was illegal to impersonate an officer of the law. Now, what is it that the city council wants other users of the park to do, when there is security people in the park in support of the police?
We don't do a back and forth during oral communications, we'll hear your question, and then if one of the council members wants to respond, they'll, at the conclusion of oral communications.
Okay, well, that's my question, what do you expect a non, a, a resident of Glendale to do in a city park, when you're approached by a person that's in civilian clothing and is armed, and tells you to move their vehicle?
Right, okay, thank you, Ms. Yelsick. Margaret Hammond, followed by Christian Arben.
Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the council, city staff, and members of the audience here and at home, my name is Margaret Hammond. I am in support of this lady, Dottie, absolutely. It's a good thing it wasn't me, because I wouldn't have left that park, I probably would have got my car and run the man over, because I feel I am a taxpayer, I have a right to be in that park, and nobody is going to tell me to get out of my park that I pay for. It's, that's wrong, that's in violation of my rights, to have some man come up, an armed person, and tell me to get out of that park. Where does he get the, I, I won't say the words, to talk, to talk to me like that? No way. I mean, there would have been war, right there and then, I'll tell you that. So she is perfectly right to stand up for her rights, she doesn't do it like I do, but she had a right to be in that park with her friends jogging. She had no knowledge that there was going to be an event there, and why should she have been ordered out of that park? That she is a taxpayer and has a right to be there. She isn't breaking any law, what has she done wrong, that she should be treated as though she is wrong, for being in the park? I, and, and for asking why this man is, was allowed to do that. It's, she's perfectly right about that. And I have so many of my friends, as a matter of fact, that have asked me for her name, and they feel that they will support her in whatever action is necessary for this type of thing to be stopped, that it's not right. Now, my next point is, back in nineteen forty-seven, the citizens of Glendale asked for, got a petition, and had an ordinance passed to prohibit boxing and so forth in the city. The, two, a couple of weeks ago, the city council took it upon themselves to say, "Well, we'll go around that by allowing a temporary event to take place at the civic auditorium." The man that was the promoter that came up, and made his proposal and so forth, and what he would like to do, and how he would, how many people would be there, a thousand people, possibly, and so forth. Now, has this proposed promoter's credentials been checked, and by whom? Who has checked them? Also, his financial standing? And what other cities has he held events in, these fighting events? And has, have those cities been contacted, to find out how the events were conducted, and if there were any problems? And also, is the city going to be fully covered for liability? Now, he, when he was here, he gave, his last words, his last time he got up, was, "The other venues, he got for free, quite often." Well, we're, we're not going to do that, because then that's a liability for the city. If we're not going to make... Uh, if we're not going to make any money, why are we doing this then? Um, and also, uh, that he did not cover the parking lots for liability. That was the statement he made. He turned and said, no, I do not have any insurance on parking lots. Now, is the city going to be responsible for that? I think the citizens of Glendale should be aware of this, and I hope a lot of you out there are listening to me about this. Because if not, and, and this is going to go on, and a lot of us are not happy about it, I'm sure the people on the streets, in the homes close by, on Breyer, and so forth, there are homes right there behind, uh, and around that area, on Ethel and so forth. What is the situation going to be? Are they going to be selling beer and wine? Is that going to be an additional problem, uh, for, uh, the people in the area, the neighbors? Uh, I do feel that there are some questions that need to be asked and need to be followed through on. Have the police checked on this man as to his credentials? Um, and I, from what I understood when the officer was standing here, he had said, no. They had not had time to do any checking. He answered you. And it was necessary to have ten men, ten officers, and a police sergeant. Now, that's going to be quite an expense. Is that promoter going to be willing to pay that expense? And the city is not going to be held, uh, up, that we should pay for these officers? Uh, so, all I'm saying, and then, is it going to come down, if there's private security, is it going to end up in a situation like this lady had in the park? Uh, I, I think that if they're carrying guns and so forth, some, there should be some regulation on that, when they accost a person from the public. Uh, there's, there's no way this should be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Christian Arbid, followed by Barry Allen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow, fellow council members. I wanted to touch upon, um, an item that I brought up to your attention a few weeks ago, um, and Mr. Eusefian addressed, um, a meeting that was going to be taking place, um, I believe it was on the 18th. Like to see if Mr. Eusefian could, um, just remind the public, or let us know, uh, the date, the time, where it's going to be. Um, my office has received several emails. Thank you, Mr. Eusefian. Um, in regarding, regards to this meeting, there is quite a bit of outreach and attention that this, uh, meeting has brought. Uh, over the last few, few weeks, we've said, definitely seen, uh, decrease, a definite number of decrease in foreclosures. We were at 530, we were at 500, now we're about 475. So, we're seeing a decrease, and we're on the right path. But, uh, there's been a lot of questions about this, and, and, uh, been emailed quite a few, uh, received quite a few emails. So, thank you for that, Mr. Eusefian. Uh, the last item, uh, is something that I brought up, uh, a few weeks ago, um, with respect to a street sign in Glendale, um, with the, named Grange Mount. Um, and Mr. Zern picked up his book, his Official Book of Streets. And I just wanted to get some clarification or, um, some direction from you, Mr. Zern, or the mayor. My office, um, printed out a sheet of, uh, all 23 homes, um, on Grange Mount in Glendale. So, read if you wouldn't mind giving this to, uh, Mr. Zern. I would just like some clarification and direction, uh, whether we have an error, uh, in these, in the city book of, of, uh, the spelling, the street sign of Grange Mount, um, or we have 23 grand deeds that are spelled incorrectly, uh, or 23 homeowners that, you know, uh, I'm not sure what street they live on. So, we need an extra, just some clarification on that. Uh, thank you very much, uh, that's all right. Thank you very much, council members, and, uh, Mayor Drayman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arbid. Barry Allen, followed by Patrick Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen. The, uh, it's been a long day, hasn't it? 10 o'clock this morning, uh, for many of those who have, uh, been watching. And by the way, I was really quite surprised that, uh, this morning, at such an important meeting having to do with, uh, budget considerations and revenue raising, that there was no representation from any of the merchants' associations, uh, nor any of the homeowners' associations, just a few of the regular vultures. Um, but I think that, uh, there are some important things, uh, that have, have come up. And one of the things I, I really, I think that Steve Zern needs to be assigned to the finance department, because, uh, last week, when you needed a couple million dollars for, uh, matching funds, by God, he came up with that, just like that. I think that's great, Steve, because I, that makes me wonder, how much money is sitting around in some of these undesignedated accounts? Now, part of that started off when, uh, for, you know, just evening reading, the 2007 Caffer, uh, under, uh, I guess it was Construction in Progress, indicated that in 2007, June 30th, we were ju, still involved with the chess park. And I couldn't understand why $417,000 was shown as work in progress at the end of fiscal 2007. Now, I thought that that park was done 2004, or thereabouts, but yet, it still shows on the books as work in progress. And I can't understand that. And I just wonder if, and by the way, we did take a look at a number of other issues, uh, in that same category, and there were things that were thrown into there from 2002 and 2003. Uh, is this a major bookkeeping error? Is it, is it just something that, uh, the, the city invents to fill in holes? When you, when we looked at the, uh, capital outlay from one year to the next, that, uh, that went up $30 million last year in capital outlay, from 60 million to 90 million. And now we look at this construction in progress, and we've done a, a complete printout on it and sorted it all. In fact, it's on one of our websites, I think, under the, uh, uh, Google documents, if you want to take a look at it. But we have taken that time, and I think that the city should take the time to find out why we're having this financial, these financial issues. We don't even know where our money is. When we report money from 2007 that was spent in 2004, I think there's a problem. I think it's a major problem. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Uh, Patrick Massey.
Mayor Drayman, members of the city council, I'm Mr. Patrick Massey, and I represent the Planktoni State's Homeowners Association. I'm the president. Earlier tonight, there were a couple of comments made in these chambers concerning the beautification process of San Fernando Road. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the envelope, uh, that the city sent Hank Sheets, a former board member of the Planktoni States. I never received any beautification letters from the city. In there, we have a single sheet of paper, which shows us the median plan for San Fernando Road. Now, Mr. Zern did contend that, uh, you know, he sent a couple of pages with trees and shrubs. Well, I never got that. In fact, this went to Hank, and Hank placed it in front of my door. He called me and said, Patrick, I received something from the city, but I think you should have it. Okay? So, this is what I got from you guys, and it clearly says stamped concrete. There are no renditions of trees or shrubs. So, my letter was based on what I received from Hank Sheets. Now, I don't think Mr. Hank Sheets did anything wrong here, but what I got is not what was talked about earlier tonight. And my question is, how come a former board member is receiving letters? You guys knew that I was the representative of the Planktoni States. And for some reason, for the past year, it seems the city has been skipping over me and trying to go through Hank. Well, on September 27th, Joelyne Taylor was elected as our vice president by the residents of the Planktoni States. I want to thank Hank Sheets for his great service that he provided us, but from now on, please, either Joelyne Taylor or Patrick Massey. You guys have our addresses. And, uh, so, my letter to you guys was based on what I saw. It does not show trees, it does not show shrubs. Thank you for including that. If it's part of the plan, thank you all. We do appreciate the fact that you're going to put trees, just like Burbank has, on their side. Burbank has done a wonderful job with their San Fernando Road, and we, you know, we would just want the same thing, too. I came here four years ago, and I thanked Mr. Steve Zern for a great job they did with the sidewalks and the new asphalt on San Fernando Road. I came here on three or four occasions, it's on record. And let me thank you once again for doing a great job on Glen Oaks. We appreciate the bike lane that you added there. We appreciate the new asphalt that you added there. Thank you very much. The Planktoni States does not complain all the time. We only complain when our quality of life is at stake, like right now, what we're going through with the projects that we've been hit with. Okay? And for the record, let me just say, Planktoni States had no complaints against the cell phone tower that you want to put at Planktoni Park. Mr. Chapchan wrote me a wonderful letter. Unfortunately, I didn't have the time to contact him because of the growing family that, you know, I'm, I'm blessed with. Uh, but, we didn't make a complaint about the cell phone tower, did we? In fact, a couple of weeks ago, I even talked to Mr. Starbird for a minute or two, and I said, you know what? We're open to the idea of having a CNG station right next to the overpass that you guys are building, if, if it's possible, by code, by zone, by engineering, because there used to be a CNG, uh, station there. We're open to it. It's in our neighborhood, we're open to it, as long as, you know, you guys want to put another one there, because I think most of this stuff is still underground, if I'm not mistaken. So, you know, the Planktoni State is very open to these things, you know? And unfortunately, one council member always likes to take chavs at us, but, uh, we are here to fight for our quality of life. That's it. Period. You know? And let me just, uh, say something else here, because now I'm taking off my hat as the Planktoni State's president, I'm putting my hat as the, as a resident of Glendale. You know, I did not go to Berkeley College, I went to UC Berkeley and a couple of other universities. I have numerous graduate degrees. I made my money by selling photographs. I worked for a major studio to pay for college, myself, so I made my money through the arts. I, I was also a second chair violinist in a major, uh, symphony. Okay? So, I got that side also. So, let's not, you know, try to come here and, you know, portray Patrick Massey as the bad guy. I made my money through arts, I paid for college by selling photographs. In fact, um, I have a couple of pictures on eBay with a couple of bids, and they might sell. So, you know, let's not get into that. And I want to thank Mr. Weaver, Mr. Frank Quintera, and Mr. John Drayman for making the right decision tonight. You should pick the best qualified people for that board. Okay? And once again, Mr. Quintera and Mr. Drayman have consistently fought for the quality of life for my neighborhood, and I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Massey, that's our last speaker. Let me go to, let me go to my colleagues, Mr. Weaver, Mr. Najarian.
I have a couple of comments. To the, uh, the lady that came to speak.
Yelsick?
Yes. I mean, let's be, let's be clear about this. Uh, if you, in any way feel that you were assaulted, and that doesn't have to be with physical force, you can be assaulted by someone walking up to you, showing a gun, and saying, listen, lady, beat it. Uh, your complaint should be to the Glendale Police Department. We cannot investigate that, that's not our forte. Uh, they should take your complaint. If they do not take your complaint, then you can come to us and say, I went to file a complaint, they did not do so. That complaint will be forwarded to the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office, uh, for prosecution if they deem fit. I don't know what that gentleman was doing, I don't know how he spoke to you, I don't know how Margaret knows. Was Margaret with you? I don't think so, but, uh, she's heard a lot of, but, but this is something that, that really is particular to you. Um, and it shouldn't be something that is, uh, spread all over. There may be a criminal investigation that is following up, and, uh, the less hearsay that's involved, the less it becomes a political issue or a council issue, the better justice can be served. So, you can come up to us every week. We can't start an investigation. We can't have the man arrested, we can't submit it for prosecution to the district attorney's office. You need to go into the police department in excruciating detail and explain to them what happened, and let them sort it out, they are the experts. I don't know what authority that man was given from the city, I don't know, uh, what authority he was given by any other agency, whether it was a private security guard agency to carry a gun, whether it was a state private, uh, security guard license, there are strict regulations on their behavior. So, if he crossed the line, if, for either the state licensing or the criminal laws of the state of California, he should be prosecuted. So, that's the best advice I can give you. I'm not sure there's anything else we, as a council, can do to resolve that issue.
Ms. Yelsick, I, we can't do this for a couple of reasons. One is, if you're going to speak, you need to be at the microphone, but, but let's let the council finish, and if they need a question of you, they will ask. Mr. Starbird.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I thought I might just, uh, jump in before Mr. Najarian moves on to his next item, and say that the, uh, police department did take her comments, uh, and they did conduct an investigation. Uh, I have the results of that. Uh, I would like, uh, to suggest that Ms. Yelsick meet with Sergeant Tom Lorenz, when she's available, and he will update her on their conclusion. Uh, the security guard in question was hired at the request of the city, not the individual, but the group using the park was required to utilize private security in addition to the two Glendale police officers who were assigned to the event. As you know, we try to do that to reduce the number of sworn officers that must be assigned in order to reduce the cost to the groups. The security guard in question, uh, possesses a firearm license, a baton permit, uh, and OC, and an OC spray certificate, uh, and is a licensed security guard, with all of those being valid, and had the, uh, right to carry a firearm. Some security guards do, uh, some don't. Those that do usually frankly charge more for their services. In this case, the individual had not as yet put on his security, uh, shirt, and he should have. Uh, there was also somebody else who witnessed the exchange between Ms. Yelsick and the individual, and, uh, their observation was that the gentleman did not conduct himself in the same manner that a Glendale police officer would expect to conduct themselves from a customer service standpoint. Uh, and that is, uh, and that is part of what, uh, the PD has followed up with the security company and the group that utilized the park. And again, Officer Tom, or Sergeant Tom Lorenz, we can do one of that in more detail with Ms. Yelsick. Uh, they did investigate it, though, based on her comments. I asked the chief to do that, they did, and they'll be happy to share that with her.
Councilmember Najarian.
Okay, my, uh, thank you, my, I think that's well put, Mr. Starbird, and Sergeant Lorenz can explain that in a little further detail. Uh, with regard to Margaret, Margaret, I'm glad you are supporting boxing in Glendale, so long as the promoter has his credentials checked out thoroughly by the police department, so long as the city bears no liability for any incidents occurring inside the venue or outside in the parking lot, so long that all the costs for security, whether they're Glendale Police Department or private security guards, are covered, and that his history in other venues comes back clean and acceptable, and gets you a ringside seat. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, councilmember Najarian. Uh, Mr. Eusefian, do you have anything?
No. Okay. I have a couple of things. Let me, uh, let me go back to Ms. Yelsick, let me address your issue again from a different standpoint, um, uh, and Margaret tangentially, because she was raised some of the same issues. This was not, by the way, an issue apparently of Ms. Yelsick just walking along, and, and this man walked up and said, you, out of here. It apparently stemmed from, uh, the, the parking issue. Uh, Sergeant Lorenz, uh, made me, I happened to be at the event at the time, I had been speaking at the event, it was the, uh, Armenian Independence Celebration at Verdugo Park, I think the 11th annual that they've held there, I believe. And, uh, before I went on to speak, Sergeant Lorenz updated me on the fa, on the bare, their bare bones of what they were investigating at the time. The point is, that this was not something that was ignored, Ms. Yelsick did what she should have done. She went to the police. Uh, the police went there, spoke to her, and Sergeant Lorenz heard what she had to say, and they generated an investigation. And that's how it should be. Um, there are, very often, as we learn up here, a couple of sides, at least two sides, and maybe three and four sides to almost everything. So, before we start jumping to conclusions that somebody was just walking through the park, and a man walked up with a gun and said, you, get out of here, you have no right to be here, or anything like that, um, let's just make sure we know what we're talking about, not just based on what somebody comes to the microphone and says, but what actually the facts are. There is more to it than that, as you're beginning to hear. And it is, has been investigated, and, and I would also recommend that Ms. Yelsick, uh, speak with Sergeant Lorenz to see what the follow-up has been. Number one. Number two, uh, Ms. Yelsick raises the issue of- Number two, uh, Ms. Yelson raises the issue of KABC radio. My comment was not that we have the most accessible, uh, local government, I'm not sure I would ever say that. What I said was, the discussion was, the host had asked me about the differences between local government and, say, state government and federal government, uh, vis a vis accessibility of a private citizen to interact with the government. And what I said is that local government is meant to be our most available form of representation for all of its citizens, because, you know, much as we may agree or disagree, what we're doing right here, you can't go do at the, uh, State Assembly or the State Senate. You can't walk into the governor's office, you can't walk into your, into the, the floor of the Senate or the House of Representatives and, and get five minutes to air your issues. That's what I was talking about. Not that we're perfect. We aren't, and I think anybody that knows anything about local government knows that you'd be crazy to be an elected official and try to imply that local government is perfect. Um, so that's what we were talking about. Um, uh, the fact that Mr. Rantell, uh, made the comment that you're describing, um, I think he was just trying to, uh, be polite and flatter and nothing more. Um, Margaret, on, with regard to boxing, um, the phrase used was cost recovery, complete cost recovery. I think I used, personally, I know at least, used that phrase at least three, four times, uh, in that regard, and that is what Councilmember Najarian was speaking about. Insurance, both inside and out, security, uh, for the, uh, for the place, meaning Glendale Police Department and to what extent their costs would have to be paid for like anybody else who's using a public venue or doing a public event. Uh, background check, rent, you're quite right. Uh, the gentleman did say that, uh, in certain venues, he was speaking of casinos, uh, where, uh, they have him come without paying rent as an attraction. Here, though, he knows clearly, as we explained to him, there is a rental, and there would have to be cost recovery on that, plus background check, and so on. So, uh, yeah, and it is the one time. Well, we found out, of course, uh, in the process of discussing it, that it had occurred in 1998.
Ninety-nine.
Yeah, uh, because the people putting it together had no idea that there was an ordinance prohibiting, uh, boxing. It went on, and no one even knew it had happened. So, uh, I also know that some of the public events we have there that are not of a boxing nature per se, uh, end up with, uh, far more, uh, trouble from the standpoint of, oh, just like everyday weddings where, where prize fights break out. So, um, we'll see. And that's why we didn't say, uh, to that promoter, none of us said, "Okay, go for it." It was, "We're going to try one time to see how it works out, what the needs are, whether it, it works out well or does not, and then we'll know and make a decision from there." But in terms of the cost recovery, you are quite right in asking, and there's to be full cost recovery on all of those things you mentioned. Um, and I have one other question, and that was for, um, Mr. Arbid, uh, Christian Arbid, and I would like to ask you directly a question, if you wouldn't mind coming back up, just a quick one. Uh, you were talking about the foreclosure rate, and you were saying it's, it, it went down?
Yes.
And I wasn't sure what you were trying to indicate that the decreasing foreclosure rate was, in your mind, linked to?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's linked to several items. Um, lately, there's been quite a bit of outreach when it comes to the public. Um, one of the reasons I'm here, um, I, I think, um, frankly, uh, not, not a plug, but I, I thank the Glendale News Press, they've been very instrumental with placing some information in the newspaper. Um, you know, I think there's quite a bit of media, um, uh, announcements and so on, it, when it comes to homeowners' rights, what their choices are, and outs to, you know, ways to get out of foreclosure. So, I think it's a combination of, of, uh, quite a few outlets, but primarily public outreach and, and, and media attention in this matter. And, and I do have to thank Sabrina at the Glendale News Press, quite frankly. We've done quite a bit of work with them, uh, in the real estate, uh, section of their magazine, drawing attention to, you know, companies like our, our company and, and, um, our website, thismarket sucks dot com, and other outlets that, that help homeowners, uh, stay in their homes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Um, are there any other comments? No? All right. Mr., we have some, uh, new business. Mr. Weaver.
Yes. I'd like to move that the city attorney is hereby authorized to initiate legal action against Zimmer's Esco Inc. in order to collect any monies paid to the plaintiffs in a matter of Fortin slash Ganji slash Trinidad slash Kavani versus the City of Glendale, case number BC 339640, BC 339664, BC 339664, and BC 339643, as a result of delays in processing escrows for properties to be conveyed to the city. City attorney is here, is further authorized to incur any and all expenses necessary in connection with said matter.
Second, we have a motion, and a second, is there any discussion? There is not? Ms. Buchanan, if you could.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes. Second, we have a motion, and a second, we are adjourned.